Good evening, could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Kalanda?
Yes, Mr. Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum, Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Sieratino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Tonight we have several special recognitions, four actually. First, we're recognizing nine students who've been selected for the 2012 Missouri Scholars Academy. In addition, we're honoring winners of the Martin Luther King Junior Essay Poster Contest, Parkway NEA Scholarship Winners, and we'll hear from Janma Zaraka, Executive Director of the Parkway Alumni Association, with an update on Granting Dreams program. First, please welcome Lou Jobs, Gifted Education Teacher, to the podium to introduce the Missouri Scholars Academy Students. Mr. Jobs teaches at West High and West Middle School and has taught at the Scholars Academy for 27 years.
Good evening. That makes me feel really old. I'm going to ask to join me, a really important part of our team for the Scholars Academy, Susan Dan- Sue Danstil, who along with Debbie Beasley did all the hard work of talking to the kids, helping them with their applications, etc. So Susan would join me. It sounds like hyperbole, but I said last year something to the effect that the Scholars Academy, for students and for teachers, is life-changing. It really does change you in just three weeks. Parkway's a great place, the Scholars Academy is a great place. And we're lucky, as usual, we have a significant number of students who are going to the Academy, nine of them this year, sophomores, juniors-to-be. They'll be housed at the University of Missouri Columbia and have access to all the wonderful amenities that the university holds. Probably the best thing I could do, just to give you a small taste, and this will take one minute, in 1988, students at the Academy wrote an anthem, and now over 9,000 students who are all over the world know this song and have sung it. I'm not going to sing it for you now, but I'll read the refrain to you, written by scholars. "You are all a part of us, spread throughout the land, building friendships, special trusts, bound together hand in hand. Tomorrow is an open door inviting you and me, giving us a chance to soar and wings to set us free." We're going to have some Parkway kids soaring in June. Susan's going to announce some of the honorees.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to let you know that it was a very competitive selective process to find our scholars. The scholars were screened on their plan test scores, on their GPA, they had to take an IQ test, and then they had to get some teacher recommendations and submit some essays to the Missouri Scholars Academy people. And so I'm very proud of all of our scholars that were candidates in the district, have been chosen to participate. So it's a wonderful honor. I'd like to introduce first the North candidates, or I'm sorry, the North kids that actually have been selected. And the first one is Kyle Tolzer Aldaz. Kyle, if you would come on up. You're going to shake their hands? Next is Alan Keraton. He's from North High also. And then our third candidate from North is Alicia Carr, but she could not be with us tonight. She is actually dancing in Canada tonight. From Central High, our scholars are Melinda Lai. And our second scholar is Elaine Reichert. And now Mr. Jobs will announce the scholars from West and South High.
I'd just point out too, that being nominated by your school does not assure that you'll be in the Academy. When you put together all the nominees, from all the top nominees throughout the state, there's about 535, and 330 are chosen from that group. So it's the, it really is the creme de la creme. From West High, James J.D. Thank you for your time. What you see before you are some wonderful minds and wonderful souls. We'll have a wonderful three weeks. Thanks.
Next I'd like to invite Janma Zaraka, Executive Director of the Parkway Alumni Association, to come to the podium. Next week, the Parkway Alumni Association will recognize recipients of the Granting Dreams Program. The Granting Dreams Program, founded by the Alumni Association, is designed to turn dreams into realities for Parkway students who are eager to further their learning to explore new opportunities. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we do and what we've been up to. As you know, we have three facets to our mission: service to students, service to staff, and service to alumni. I'm going to talk about just a couple of our activities, because I know there's lots going on. We've spent many, many hours reading and evaluating over 1,000 applications this year. We received more than we've ever received. And next Monday, there will be about 600 people here, and we have 574 RSVPs already, and we're going to be awarding grants to 238 students totaling close to $20,000 in monetary grants, and some of them are community resource grants. It's a really awe-inspiring event, because these kids, and what's interesting is, listening to the names of the Missouri scholars, many of them received dream grants through the years. It really teaches the kids so much about putting down what they want to do and thinking through the stages it's going to take to attain that dream. So it's really nice that we can help them out with it. And a few weeks ago, you saw us at the Albert Awards and Teacher of the Year Awards, and one of the most exciting programs for the alumni facet is coming up, the Hall of Fame, and we just picked 22 people to be inducted in the Hall of Fame in November. So keep November 17th on your calendar, and thank you to Parkway and the school board for letting us do what we do and be part of Parkway. Thanks.
Next, we'd like to recognize the winners of the Martin Luther King Junior Essay Poster Contest and the Parkway NEA Scholarship Winners. Please welcome the President of the Parkway NEA, Joanna Bozeman, to introduce these students.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Kalanda. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize the winners of the Martin Luther King Essay Poster Contest and also our scholarship winners. This year's theme, Through Justice, Peace, and Righteousness, I Am a Drum Major for the Dream of Dr. King. Dr. King was a man with a dream, and he gave his life to make that dream come true for all. Even though he was assassinated at the very early age of 39, he left a legacy of hope and inspiration that continues today. At this time, I'd like to introduce Phyllis Calvin Barnes, Reading Intervention Specialist at Mason Ridge Elementary and Chair of Parkway NEA Human Rights Committee, to present the awards for this evening. Phyllis.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd really like to just take a moment to thank everyone who helped to make this event possible, and to give a warm welcome to all of our students and their guests. It's a fitting tribute to Dr. King's memory, that even more than 40 years after his death, he's honored by events such as this contest. This year, we had over 100 entries, and I truly appreciate the continued support of this wonderful opportunity for Parkway students. We're pleased to be able to honor the students who created such inspirational words and images to support this year's theme. Through justice, peace, and righteousness, I am a drum major for the dream of Dr. King. This year's theme is taken from Dr. King's final sermon at Ebenezer Baptist Church, given just two months before his death. It was such an important sermon that parts of it have been chosen to represent Dr. King's legacy on the Martin Luther King Junior National Memorial in Washington, DC. While this year's theme is definitely important, it's also more challenging than other themes in the past for students to represent. Please allow me to share a few excerpts from Dr. King's sermon, in an effort to illustrate how well our students rose to the challenge this year. Tell them not to mention that I have a Nobel Peace Prize. That isn't important. Tell them not to mention that I have 300 or 400 other awards. That's not important. Tell them not to mention where I went to school. I'd like somebody to mention that day that Martin Luther King Junior tried to give his life to serving others. I'd like for somebody to say that day that Martin Luther King Junior tried to love somebody. I want you to be able to say that day that I did try to feed the hungry. I want you to say that I tried to love and serve humanity. Yes, if you want to say that I was a drum major, say that I was a drum major for justice. Say that I was a drum major for peace. I was a drum major for righteousness, and all of the other shallow things will not matter. I won't have any money to leave behind, I won't have the fine and luxurious things of life to leave behind, but I just want to live a committed life behind, and that's all I want to say. Thank you. The posters that the students created will be shown on the screen, and students, would you please come forward as your name is called? Samantha Heckler, Shenandoah Valley. Samantha was our first-place district winner, and she's also a second-place winner in the kindergarten and first grade category at the state level. Congratulations, Samantha. Jack Carey, Shenandoah Valley. Jack was a second-place winner in our district, and he was a third-place winner at the state level as well. Rifa Reza, Shenandoah Valley. Rifa was a third-place winner at our district-level competition. Congratulations, Rifa. Jessie Zhu, Craig. Jessie was a first-place winner in our district, and Jessie was also a first-place winner in the state level of the competition. Connor Fan. Connor is unable to make it here with us this evening, but Connor was a second-place winner at our district level, and we're very proud of him. Lisa was our third-place winner in the second and third grade category. In the fourth and fifth grade level, we have Jake Feldman from Shenandoah Valley. Jake was a first-place winner in our district, and Jake was also a winner at the state level. Mira Nagudkar, Craig. Jake and Mira tied for first place at our district level. Carly Anderson from Claymont. Carly was our second-place winner in the fourth and fifth grade category. And last, but certainly not least, April Moon from Shenandoah Valley. Some of you may think that April looks a little familiar, and that's because she was also a winner at the district level last year. Congratulations again, April. Congratulations to all of our winners, and at this time, I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the parents, family, and staff members who are here in support of their students. Would you please stand and be recognized? I would also like to thank the many Parkway NEA members for their assistance with organizing the contest, as well as serving as judges. We start planning for this contest in the fall and move into full swing once we return from winter break, and somehow already it's May. Please allow me a moment to give a special recognition to our PNEA Board Member and Mason Ridge Librarian, Vicky Miller. Vicky was unable to attend this evening, but she gave a tremendous amount of her time and support to help coordinate the project this year, and Vicky is retiring at the end of the school year, and she will truly be missed. And finally, I would like to thank our PNEA President, the amazing Joanna Bozeman, for her support throughout this project and her efforts in coordinating tonight's presentation. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize our students' achievements.
And at this time, I'd like to recognize our 2012 Parkway NEA Scholarship recipients. As one way of fulfilling its commitment to further the education profession, Parkway NEA offers up to $4,500 annually in individual scholarships. The Parkway NEA Scholarship is designed to encourage and assist the best and the brightest of our students to enter a career of teaching, and also increase opportunities for professional excellence for current teachers. Since 1983, Parkway NEA has awarded scholarships to seniors, high school seniors, wishing to enter the education profession. Traditionally, each of the five Parkway High School has been given at least one scholarship. In 1990, in 1988, an additional scholarship was added, the Jean Olson Memorial Scholarship, to be offered to the child or dependent of a Parkway NEA member who is pursuing a career in education. In 1996, the Vito Maniachi Scholarship, which was formed the first time he retired, was created to help provide professional development opportunities for active Parkway NEA members. And then in 2002, the Linda Faverro Memorial Scholarship was created to help provide professional development opportunities or advanced degree assistance for active Parkway NEA members. The Parkway NEA High School Scholarship winners, and each of these students will receive a $500 scholarship once we receive a letter from the university that they're attending. From Parkway North, Mary Wilston. And Mary will attend the University of Missouri this fall, and she would like to become a high school history teacher. And Mary attended McKelvey Elementary. Also from Parkway North, Anthony M. Henderson. Anthony will attend Lincoln University this fall, and as many of you may know, just this week, Anthony was recognized as one of the three Parkway students to receive a state From Parkway South, April Byrd. I don't believe April is here. April plans to attend the University of Missouri this fall. She wants to be an elementary teacher. She attended Rin Hallow for preschool and elementary, and Southwest Middle. Also from Parkway South, Anna Lynn Jampharetz, who couldn't be with us this evening, plans to attend the University of Arkansas. She couldn't be with us because of a previous commitment. Receiving the Jean Olson Memorial Scholarship is Jacob Falahi from South High, and he is the son of PNEA member Luann Falahi, who is not with us this evening. She is a teacher at North High, and Jacob will attend St. Louis University, and he attended Oak Brook and Southwest Middle. Receiving the $500 Vito Maniachi Professional Development Scholarship is Sarah Reeves, a first-year math teacher at Central High School. And Sarah will attend Missouri Baptist University and pursue a Master of Science in Education with emphasis in curriculum and instruction. Receiving the $500 Linda Faverro Memorial Scholarship is Janelle Robinson. Janelle is also a first-year math teacher at Central High School. She will attend Missouri Baptist University to pursue a Master's in Educational Administration. Okay, and let's give another round of applause for all of our recipients this evening. And thanks again for the opportunity to recognize our Martin Luther King and scholarship winners.
Hello. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, teachers, and principals for joining us tonight. Thank you also to our teachers who are recipients. We're honored to have you with us. At this time, we're going to take a brief break, and we'll resume our board meeting shortly. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
We're going to go on now with 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. There are none. 5.0 citizen statements. Tonight, we have one, Jane Starling. Is Jane Starling here?
I just thought I would call this line.
Oh, okay, sure. Thanks.
Lots of people do that. Lots of people do.
Great comment.
Thank you for attending. 6.0, call for executive session, none. 7.0, approval of agenda for May 2nd, 2012. May I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. 6-0, sorry. Thank you. 8.0 resolutions. We have two this evening. National School Nurses Day, May 9th. Where would we be without our school nurses? And Memorial Day, May 28th. May I please have a motion and a second to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, 6-0. Number 9.0 communications. 9.01, calendar of meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, June 13th, 2012, at Central Middle School at 7:30 PM. 9.02, are there any liaison reports? DeMogramin?
Speaking of nurses, Dr. Marty and I attended, I think it was two weeks ago, the PNEA Communication Lab and we had a great meeting and I would just like to tell you some of the things that our nurses do. In the 10-11 school year, there were 232,704 events in the health rooms across our district. 2,563 of these were health room visits from our staff members. 19,319 student health screenings. 55,476 medications administered. 16,569 special needs administrations. 154 standing orders, and this is the best one, 2,132 head lice checks. Students' needs, 2,059 have allergies. 1,923 asthma, 47 diabetes, 14 immunosuppressed, 3 pacemaker, and 123 have seizures or epilepsy. 1,429 have ADHD. 215 anxiety disorder. 289 autism and Asperger's syndrome. 64 bipolar. 135 depression. 51 OCD. 24 ODD. So our nurses have a full plate. They deal with lots and lots of issues with our staff and our students and they do a great job. And I think Dr. Marty and I are both very pleased to report that the nurses had no issues. They're very supportive of Parkway and we're very supportive of what they do every day.
I would just want to echo that. We also had Chelsea Watson and Joy Torkelson.
Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry.
That we're also present.
And I also want to report that Dr. Marty and I have attended a couple of the cooperative school districts steering committee meetings for strategic planning. We spent eight hours over two nights trying to map out a mission and vision and action plans and all sorts of things. So it was, Desi was there, I'm sorry. Kathy Blackmore was there. Who am I forgetting?
I think that's Sarah.
Okay. But it was intense work and we're anxious to see what comes of it.
Yes, good work.
That's all.
Anybody else? See you.
I attended the Parkway Steering Committee with the...
Yeah.
At the same time, but essentially the Parkway Steering Committee action teams were discussed at that particular session. We had the action team update from the social emotional, action team update from special education, DAD, PMI, which we're going to hear more about tonight. Also, some revisions on the strategic plan action steps as well. And talked about the transition, the fact that Julie is leaving and Kathy is leaving as well. Desi will take on more overall administrative responsibilities as the deputy superintendent and John Barrow hopefully will continue. And I'm sure there'll be some others that will take some leadership roles as well. But I think the most important thing is the Steering Committee is continuing to monitor the Project Parkway process. It's not going away in any respect. Things are going very, very well and will continue to as we continue to develop our strategic plan and all the action steps to basically provide for the services to our students and our school community. So I want to thank everyone involved and particularly want to thank Kathy. Bonnie has certainly been involved. Julie has been absolutely wonderful as well in taking some of the leadership roles and we just want to applaud them and thank them and know that we're going to be in good hands as we go into the future.
Anybody else? Several of us attended the PTO Leadership Recognition Dinner last week, which honored our outgoing PTO presidents and welcomed our incoming PTO presidents. It was a really great night. We had a couple of interesting speakers and we had a lovely dinner and I look forward to working with the PTO presidents that are joining the group next year. And also Jane Thaw is going to be joining us as a co-leader of that group. Anybody else? Okay. Number 10.0, action items. We have 31 action items. Are there any that need to be pulled?
10.28.
Thank you. Any others? So for all those excluding 10.28, may I have a motion and a second to approve these action items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Mr. Major?
Thank you.
Eric? Mark? Well, first off, I want to thank you both for your timely and detailed responses to my various and sundry assaults, I mean, questions, I mean. Obviously, we're talking about a substantial project here. If my present value calculations are right, we're tickling a million dollar commitment here. But I think the, and we're talking up to 33 25 kilowatt solar systems that were, is the proposal here. And again, I take the position of a skeptic on this, and it generated some pretty aggressive questioning. And I appreciate your responses and the explanation that you laid out for me. And President Feldman was also in attendance at that meeting, and I think really gave us a comfort level with what the proposal is and how it plays out over time. I think just to group them into categories, my initial concerns would have regarded the, just if you do independent study, you know, reliable sources like Wikipedia, it would appear that the cost of generating electricity via solar panels is nominally twice the price that we pay here in Missouri for electricity that's for the most part generated by coal. So I guess, Eric, if you want to lead into that, and how do we, how do we make the numbers make sense in this proposal?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. Well, solar, as you know, it is a little bit more expensive. However, there are a variety of different incentives that are, that currently exist for entities out there, specifically taxable entities, that would be able to take advantage of in order to make that much more cost competitive. Those are, Amerunewee has an incentive for $2 a watt installed, as well as a renewable energy credit incentive at $50 per 1,000 kilowatt hours generated for each year. There's also a 30% federal tax grant or credit that applies to specifically taxable entities. Those are, that last incentive is specific to taxable, and with Parkway School Districts being a nonprofit, the concept of this project is that we will lease equipment from that taxable entity that will actually be able to realize the benefit of those financial incentives that otherwise Parkway School District could not. And therefore, it would actually be more cost advantageous for us to lease the solar equipment than pay our current rates in electricity generated predominantly by coal.
Okay, so courtesy of the federal government tax incentives and...
And the...
Was it the state legislature, or was that a referendum that?
That was a voter initiative and voter approved initiative of Proposition C that passed in 2008.
Okay, so Prop C in 2008. There in fact is a free lunch that we can pick up, so thank you very much for that. I guess my next level of concern had to do with the finances, and you had various savings projections laid out. And now, I'm not sure if it's on the consumer science curriculum, but certainly whenever I see a proposal where the savings curve gets steeper and steeper in years 10 through 20, and that's where the majority of the money appears to be generated, I get, yellow lights go off. But Mark, I think you, you're probably more of a money skeptic than I am, and much more skilled at tearing them apart. I get general notions of numbers and kind of run with them. But would you like to address that as far as the?
Sure. You know, and I agree with you. I had the exact same thoughts you had. And essentially, the lease is structured in a manner that sets our lease payments at a rate lower than what our current cost for the electricity that will be generated by these solar panels are. So we save money upfront from day one. The savings gets much greater for us if the actual Amerun electricity costs go up dramatically over time, because then the spread between our fixed lease amount and what we would have been paying for Amerun electricity becomes wider. So our savings run anywhere from 20, you know, if they stay flat, worst case scenario, we save $6,700 the first year. If they, you know, if they rise at 5% a year, we're going to save, you know, a million dollars guaranteed. We have a guarantee built into this. So it's a, in my mind, there's not a downside, and unfortunately, if you look at it, I mean, if utility costs go up dramatically, it's more of an upside from this perspective. However, it is only 2.2% of our total annual electric use, so I'm still rooting for low utility costs.
I appreciate that, but I think based on the projections you did, basically, the only, the only way it doesn't make sense is if the price of electricity drops substantially over the next 20 years. I guess I'm comfortable making that bet. I'm guessing the rest of the board maybe as well. And then I guess the, the last piece, piece of question I had was regarding the vendor. And certainly, anytime you're looking at a 20-year, to my way of thinking, a 20-year business relationship, like to feel comfortable that the person on the other side of the deal is going to be there in 20 years. And a quick check on Brightergy indicated that they had been in business in some form or another for five or six years, but it looks like in their current iteration, eh, three or four years. And certainly, the management team, CEO describes himself as a serial entrepreneur, which I'm sure is attractive in some arenas, but I don't think school boards are necessarily, get a warm and fuzzy from serial entrepreneurs. And he also looks like he's less than 30 years old, not that I'm jealous or anything. But, and you and I kind of talked that through as far as the shape of the lease and the importance of that vendor being in existence from a maintenance standpoint. And you want to share your thoughts on that?
Sure. And actually, Eric had, and I had a great number of conversations about this. I mean, and he's the one that actually kind of shared a lot of it with me. I mean, the beauty of these panels, the way I understand it, is they basically just set on our roof. So they don't penetrate the roof surface. You know, essentially, our contract guarantees we at least break even or save a little bit of money, could save potentially more. If for some reason there was a problem with this company down the road, you know, we would either continue the lease with the successor to that organization, or worst case scenario, they pull the solar panels off our roof, and, you know, our only harm is any future savings that would have been generated. So...
Under my modest experience with the bankruptcy court, I got to believe the trustee will find something to do with a $70,000 a year payment coming into this entity, so.
Agree with you.
Okay. And then finally, I think there were some, we received some 11th hour questions regarding the, the form of the request for proposal and raising some questions. And I don't, I, Carol forwarded the email. I don't know if anybody else saw it. Okay. If you can open your email, but Mark, did you have a chance to look at it and?
I did, and I immediately turned to Eric and said, can you respond to these questions? So I think I'll let him answer.
Okay. Eric, if you can summarize the quibbles, if you will, and then, and respond to them. And I understand you've had zero time to prepare for this, so I appreciate your taking a stab at it.
Absolutely. My pleasure. So a gentleman by the name of Victor Kirkland emailed with some concerns in regards to sizing of this equipment, as well as what his speculation would be, what our worst case scenario should be in regards to savings, as well as commented on a certain provision that was in the specifications for the request for proposal, and indicated that there were some local companies and concern from local companies of their inability to meet those specifications. So with that said, this request for proposal went out to several entities, several different vendors within the region. He spoke in direct response of two vendors that said were unable to bid. One of those companies, I speculate that he has an involvement with. Gentlemen's name is Victor Kirkland. It so happens to be a company named Syndicated Solar was sent an RFP. Syndicated Solar is working in conjunction with Victor Energy Group. My contact there is of a different name. However, I did have conversation with those individuals after the RFP was sent out, but before the bid date was due, before the bid opening occurred. And they had some questions in regards to that provision, and I indicated that they would be able to submit an alternate proposal if there's something in the provisions that they particularly weren't able to meet, that they could send me something that didn't meet and meet their ability to do so. About two hours before the bid opening happened, I was in contact with individuals saying, hey, you know, in essence, that you haven't submitted your bid. If you're interested, you need to submit as soon as possible. He responded saying that he was under the assumption that because we had some questions prior in that week, that he would have a couple extra days to submit his bid. Under no circumstance did I issue an addendum, or did I come to any sort of an agreement that he had additional time to submit his bid. So that said, I gave this particular company the ability to meet and provide a alternate bid and let them know of the bid deadline. So as far as their speculation on...
And in the end, you received two bids, correct?
That's correct. In the end, we received two competitive bids.
Okay. And to the point of their, a much bigger project would produce much more substantial savings, I guess the initial response you received from at least one member of this board would indicate you were probably plenty aggressive. And did you consider the possibility of substantially larger projects, or what were the, when you put together the request for proposal, were you?
Sure, so the...
Were you intentionally limited the scope?
The idea with this scope for a 25 kilowatt system on each building is that takes advantage of certain incentives that dissipate after 25 kilowatts. So if you go to a 30 kilowatt system, those five kilowatts within size aren't incentivized. So a 25 kilowatt system would give you the most bang for your buck with regards to incentive, and therefore be the most cost feasible while being as aggressive as possible. But still, all said, we're looking at a total of 2.2% of Parkway's annual electricity production. So that does keep it on a, in essence, a smaller scale, but at the same time, being aggressive to take advantage of incentives that are out there.
Okay. And we're talking about a 20-year proposal using what is mature, but essentially state-of-the-art technology?
This is efficient panels, so these are new efficient panels that are generated in a pretty cost-effective manner. So I'm sure as time goes on, there will be more efficient panels that come out. However, swapping these out isn't, the analogy that I would use is with an HVAC system. You purchase that, an air conditioner, a heater, you know, you expect it to last 20 years. If a new, more efficient model comes out in five years, you're not going to simply swap that out. So I think that these panels are more the top of the line that exists there currently.
Okay. And is it your, based on your experience, do you think there's an issue with if we want to augment later on, if newer technology becomes even more attractive? How, what's the size of this footprint, and does it impair our ability to expand in the future?
So this is, we definitely do have the ability to increase size in the future. They in essence would run a new string, is what they kind of refer to it as. The footprint of these systems would be about 2,500 square feet for each 25 kilowatt system. So there would be ample rear space left, especially on the larger schools to augment.
Okay. I appreciate your addressing all of my concerns. Anybody else?
Yeah, in your note to us, you said this is a win-win. I think it's a win-win-win when you take into consideration the academic, the educational piece of it. Can you talk about that for just a minute, please?
Be happy to. So what's great about this is they will have an online monitoring capability, so they'll actually show what is being generated, the electricity that is being generated by these panels, offsetting coal-fired plants, and what we're doing on our own rooftops with clean energy. And it will also show that the production levels as compared to what we anticipated to be shown. There are some other companies that are out there that have installed this and have demonstrated through this monitoring system that they have surpassed their original estimates. So that's something I look forward to seeing. This will also accompany an LCD display. They'll be able to go into the building of each individual school to show this, to go along with that online monitoring capability that, you know, all teachers and students will have access for their smart boards. And with that, the proposed company is submitting four consulting meetings with Parkway staff to explain the system and assist the integration into the curriculum to be done after the systems are installed.
Great. And then the environmental savings that you've listed in your memo here are really astonishing, that over the 20-year lease of these solar panels, that we could save 1,683,000 gallons of gas. That's truly going to make an impact.
Absolutely. Those are CO2 equivalents that are from an EPA calculator that's available online for anyone to replicate. They're, yeah, the annual estimates as well as the total estimates are pretty staggering. I have lots of different equivalents that are out there. One that I think is interesting is on an annual basis, what's being estimated, that this would be in essence offsetting the emissions from the electricity use of over 90 homes in each individual year.
That's awesome. Thanks. Does anybody else have any?
One follow-up, and that goes to the overall scope of this project. How does this compare to what other schools in the state of Missouri are doing in the way of solar?
Sure. So there are other schools out there, even within the St. Louis region, that are moving forward with solar. Webster Groves High School, their new addition, they are putting a 25 kilowatt system on it. Crossroads College Preparatory School in the central west end has, I think, 80-something kilowatt system. As far as the scale of which this proposal is, this would bring it up to, if we successfully implemented all 33 sites, would bring it up to 825 kilowatts worth of system. Currently, that would be the largest solar system in the state of Missouri collectively. Columbia, the city of Columbia Utility, they're in the process of moving forward on eight megawatts, which is, you know, substantially larger than this. But beyond that...
How many zeros is that for the scientists in the room?
Beyond that, this would be collectively the largest.
All right.
Anybody else? Yes?
There's a question I was going to ask, but I just think it's important to just, I mean, this is a venture, but it, but it's, you said three, win-win-win, it probably more wins. And I think the one that you talked about last, I think we have responsibility to be good stewards of the environment. When you start talking about the savings of, you know, and thinking more green is really a neat savings. But the educational piece is also, since we're having a science report tonight, what a wonderful opportunity for students and staff to really start thinking about solar. Bruce, you're right. I mean, electricity is going to go up, and I can't...
I'm good with that.
But absolutely, I mean, I mean, solar, wind, all these, we're starting to see more windmills around the country. I mean, this is our future, and it's exciting that we're going to be part of this in a lot of ways. So I really want to thank Eric. He's really been a leader. We're really fortunate to have him to really lead this. I think... I think Mark agrees.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I also appreciate when we met the other day that you explained it in terms that laypeople could understand. So thank you for that. All right. Yeah, thank you. I guess we're, may I have a motion in a second now to approve the purchase of the solar panel? 10.28.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Next, I'd like to call in Dr. Lisa Meredith. Come down and introduce our new administrator.
It is with great pleasure that I introduce Susan Erby. She will be serving as the new coordinator for elementary English Language Arts. Susan completed her bachelor's at Missouri State, her master's at Maryville, and most recently, a specialist degree in curriculum and instruction at Missouri Baptist. She has served as an educator for 15 years, 14 of which have been in Parkway, 10 as a classroom teacher, and 5 as a literacy coach. So we are excited to have Susan as part of our team. Welcome.
Thank you.
Her dad cuts a mean flat top.
Brother.
Brother.
That's her dad.
It's her dad?
Her dad's tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Next, I'd like to deviate from the agenda for just one second. I'd like to take a minute to say a quick word about two of our administrators who are retiring, and this is their last board meeting that they'll be in attendance with, although I know that they're both going to be anxiously watching a live stream, even after they've retired from Parkway. Just like to take a minute to honor, for many, many, many years of dedicated service, Mrs. Kathy Blackmore and Dr. Bonnie Maxey.
I can personally say that I've never seen two people who are on the verge of retiring work so hard and be so passionate up until the very last moment of your careers here in Parkway, and we thank you both so much. It's a very exciting time for us. It's a time of a lot of drastic changes, and we really need your guidance and your input up until the very last day that you're with us, and I thank you both for that. And next, we're going to go on to 11.0 action items. 11.01, our evaluation of our science program. I'd like to call Dr. Becky Litherland, coordinator of the science.
Okay. Got it working. Let's see where this is. All right. Good evening, President Feldman, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Calanda, and members of the Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to present to you the key findings and recommendations from an extensive evaluation of the Parkway Science Program. This program evaluation has been a year-long endeavor and represents the work of many. A special thanks goes to the members of the three teacher task forces, in elementary, middle, and high, each informing and evaluating this work throughout the school year. Input from students, teachers, administrators, parents, higher education colleagues, and members of the Project Parkway Science Advisory Committee was considered in the development of this report. Others who supported this evaluation include Ann Wells, Beverly Stranquist, and Carol Tice, secretaries at ISC. A special thank you goes to Dr. Nathan Tyson and Julie Collins for their professional collaboration frequently. The return rate for our many surveys was excellent. In terms of students, we had 2,400 middle school students respond, we had 1,400 high school students respond, and we had 781 students respond. So we felt like we were really getting good participation, and that's through efforts of teachers to get those students to participate. So we were excited about that. I want to just kind of give you a brief overview, you may have read it in the notebooks or maybe you haven't yet, but the three parts of our program. To begin with, the elementary program is in a kit-based program that's used in grades one through five. It was selected in 2006. They were developed by national writing teams supported by the National Science Foundation. They were selected for national curriculum projects and selected to align with the Missouri grade level expectations. Each unit engages students in hands-on activities to develop understanding of important concepts. A complete listing of the units at each grade level is found in Appendix A, page one. A key component of the elementary science is the use of science notebooks. The notebook is a record of students' work, just like scientists. There is a focus on meaningful writing of science concepts, scientific thinking, and/or science skills. These skills integrate the nonfiction writing skills expected in English and language arts. The notebook is essential to help students make meaning of the concepts intended by the hands-on lessons. The Parkway Middle School program has been designed by the middle school science teachers, and it's based on the Missouri grade level expectations. The curriculum includes life, earth, and physical science units at each grade level. A text series, which is small books containing two or three units, support the curriculum. The science notebook is also key here, and it's used as a record of student work and concepts learned. Challenge science is available for students in grades seven and eight. A key focus area has been replacing cookbook or step-by-step labs with inquiry experiences where students design and conduct experiments, better known as experimental design. A list of the middle school units is found in Appendix A, page two. High school science is, the high school teachers are very appreciative, first of all, of the commitment by the district and voters to build outstanding science facilities. The Parkway High School Science Program offers students a wide variety of course offerings by teachers committed to excellence. A strength of the program is a team of outstanding teachers with a passion for science and a commitment to students. Several science teachers have been recognized by the district as well as by St. Louis area science teachers organizations. Electives include things like medical science, forensics, human anatomy, geology, astronomy. A complete list of the science courses is found in Appendix A, page three. As we begin to look at data, we must consider the Parkway mission, vision, and science goals. This slide illustrates the responses to "The science curriculum as written gives me the direction I need to help students become." Curiosity ranks the highest of the four components. However, the high school teachers gave their lowest rating to curiosity. I'm kind of curious about why that's happening. Middle school teachers show the strongest connection with preparing students to meet the Parkway mission. We also have science department goals that we developed as a part of our work. Obviously, we want to increase student achievement, implement a curriculum, evaluate the high school course's content, sequence, and course offerings to ensure guaranteed viable curriculum for all students. To continue our goals, we want to have a quality common assessments, which we've gotten pretty far underway by now, and to support the science notebook and experimental design strategies. And we want to be implementing the best practices as summarized in the Parkway Learning Principles and the research on effective science teaching. Research in science education says that effective science instruction is, needs to have five components. No single method, inquiry, or teacher-directed instruction is the way science should be taught. Either can be effective if the strategy is used, incorporate the five criteria on the slide. Hands-on with no making sense is not effective. Direct instruction based on lecture and note-taking is not effective. Each method must be crafted to include these strategies. When we look at our major findings from elementary teachers, we find first off that the students like science. 94% of the teachers believe that their students like science. From elementary students, that is exemplary. They, 82% of the teachers report that they use the science notebooks. They indicated that they use the science notebook has increased their focus on learning targets, so it's helping the teachers do a better job of teaching. And 78% that felt like the notebook helped student learning. Only 55% of the teachers feel they have adequate nonfiction resources. The process of reviewing literature and selecting books for each of our units has begun. Last month, the board approved the use of science funds to purchase the books. This is a beginning. Teachers still feel they don't have enough time to teach science. It takes time to set up for lessons and to have enough time for the students to complete the investigations. As more teachers include expository writing strategies with writing and science, there are even more concerns about time. The time devoted does vary in different buildings, but I know many efforts are being made to make an adequate amount of time available. There has been professional development for four summers on experimental design, also known as a fair test. The professional development has included science notebooks, writing strategies, formative assessments, and experimental design graphs and various data collection programs. Excuse me. Considering the complexities of teaching a hands-on curriculum, the teachers feel capable and enjoy the activity-based format. However, some teachers do not have confidence that this type of program truly meets our students' needs and would prefer traditional textbooks. Our major findings from elementary parents are that their child enjoys science, so it still has a very good rating. The KIT program, 31% of the parents feel like the KIT program is meeting their child's needs, however, 50% had no opinion. So it's really hard to make an interpretation of that data that would be accurate with such a large number. What we noticed was many of the parents didn't really know anything about the science program, and that probably was the most disconcerting thing about the whole thing. It's like, why is this not being communicated? And parents really want communication, but they want it with email. They don't want websites, they don't want other things, they want email. So I'll read you a quote from one of our third-grade students, or this is from a parent, excuse me. "I think the science program is very good in third grade. I was happy when I visited to see plants growing like crazy, a greenhouse, and clear learning, hands-on and visual. We are always sent home study guides for science tests, and I feel the teachers are good at communicating what is expected. The science notebooks are impressive, and the kids totally get it and transfer it to life." I figured like that's a nice statement, they aren't all that good, but that was a nice one, so we'll take that one. The students who responded, they still like science very much at 83%, they want to learn more, they feel like the science notebook helps them, they feel like their teacher likes science. So even if the teachers are a little nervous, the kids still think they're doing great. So, and they feel it's easier to learn with the hands-on, and they feel like their teacher makes it exciting. A student quote is, "I like having a very nice teacher who is always excited about science. What I like most about science is my teacher, the experiments we do, the things we learn, and the fun we have." I'm glad they included the teacher. The graph that you see shows that Parkway fifth-grade students have scored above the state average each year on the fifth-grade science map test. In science, we only give a test at grades five, eight, and biology, so we don't do it every year like communication arts and mathematics. Parkway scores have improved 10.2% since 2008. In 2011, Parkway scores ranked sixth in the St. Louis area, and an overview of the data from all elementary schools is found in Appendix C, page two. Over the years, we have been doing things in the elementary division and making progress. We've developed unit overviews to put onto the online curriculum guide for each one of our units. They identify transfer goals, knowledge and skills, enduring understandings, essential questions, and they put, they have links to common assessments and additional resources such as discovery science. Each overview has a brief description of the lesson, and it also includes the focus or investigative question that they use for their science notebooks. At the elementary level, some of my recommendations, or from the team, are that we find and purchase and implement the use of nonfiction text sets. This is not the same as a textbook, this is a text set. We have begun the process of selecting the nonfiction literature, and I'm just waiting to place the orders. We need a way to communicate work that has been done to all teachers. Many concerns were expressed, they need assessments revised and written by teachers, they were written by teachers. Some say assessments are too easy, some say they're too difficult, some say they don't match what is taught. Teachers only want to teach lessons that directly align with the GLEES. So maybe we need a science summit, I don't know. But so, we just couldn't, wasn't clear, it was all over the board in terms of the data that we received. On middle school, the major findings that we had is once again, 97% of them believe the students like science, which is really awesome. The curriculum is aligned, and it's content, they want more content-based professional development, and that's really hard to offer within just a district. That's also almost like you have to go outside and go to other opportunities in the St. Louis area and across the state. They collaborate very well with each other. 56% of them rely on the textbook, they all say there's not time to teach, everybody says that in science, and that they would like communication with elementary teachers and with high school teachers. The major findings of the middle school teachers, discovery science is used extensively to support the curriculum. We have concerns about the rigor in challenge classes. 20.6% disagree that the challenge is there, and they're correct. Common unit assessments have been developed, there's still 50% think they're useful and 50% do not. The science notebook is still a key component. 94% of our teachers use it, they feel it increases the focus, and it improves student learning. 42 out of 44 middle school teachers have attended the professional development on notebooks, experimental design, and formative assessment. These practices are woven into the standard practices at the middle school. Middle school parents commented on several things. First of all, many of their items, they were neutral or no opinion. It was like, it was a big chunk, and it was really hard to analyze the data around that. Parents believe their students enjoy science. They do not feel the rigor is appropriate for challenge courses. They would like to see more rigor, more of a unique difference in the class. Parents have confidence in the middle school teachers. Once again, communication is rated low. In spite of teacher websites, the parents do not view the websites meeting their needs. Parents rated email as their preferred communication link. Major findings by middle school students, a majority of our middle school students like science. However, this is a significant drop from elementary. Students report that the science notebook helps them learn, as do hands-on activities. They report they are learning a lot in science. When they're asked what they would like to study further, a majority of them listed astronomy topics, planets, solar system, and now that Parkway's going to have their own solar system, things from outer space. You guys are a little slow tonight. The student comments frequently named their teacher as a strength of the science program. It's apparent that they value a good teacher and that we have many good teachers in our middle school program. Parkway Middle School students have scored above the state average on the eighth-grade science map in all four years. The students have improved 4% since 2008. There was a drop between 2010 and 2011. There are two factors that we believe are contributing to that. One factor is that student performance on constructed response questions is always low. It's the same for every school district everywhere, and it's something that our teachers are really working on to try to teach the kids the strategies to take to answer that particular type of question. Also, this is a time when they took off the performance event, and all of our work on experimental design shows up as being assessed in the performance event. So it was to our advantage to have that in the test, but it was taken out, and it's going to be out this year, but hopefully it's coming back. So we're not going to give up our efforts. More detailed data is found in Appendix D on page one. In the last five years, middle school teachers have conscientiously evaluated the curriculum and guarantee alignment. However, the number of GLEES is not reasonable. This January, with the assistance from Kevin Beckner, the middle school teachers wrote essential learnings and learning targets for all units. This work will be completed tomorrow, and teams of teachers developed common unit assessments. There continues to be need for revision. For four years, the middle school teachers have given a pre-post assessment at each grade level. These assessments directly align with the expectations of strand seven in the grade level expectations and the performance event on the map. These data are entered into PARs, and the teachers use the data to inform instruction. Data from these assessments are available in Appendix F. It's a very powerful look to look at the data and the growth from pre to post in each of those three middle school years. It's really powerful. My recommendations for the middle school are that we continue the interdisciplinary courses. That was one of the things we had to kind of ponder and see which way we wanted to go, but we still want to go this way. We do need to do more to integrate literacy strategies- My recommendations for the middle school are that we continue the interdisciplinary courses. That was one of the things we had to kind of ponder and see which way we wanted to go, but we still want to go this way. We do need to do more to integrate literacy strategies, we need to get on board with the expectations of the Common Core, and see how we need to make modifications. We further want to develop stage three, which is really lesson plans and lessons on the OCG. We do need to work on a curriculum for challenge science. We'll always keep revising our unit assessments, we've got to find a way to communicate with parents, and we need to have time to meet with the elementary teachers and the high school teachers. Major findings for the high school teachers were, first of all, they appreciate the new facilities. They are just very excited about what's been built, and even more excited about what's coming this next summer even more. Seventy-eight percent of them perceive that their students like science. However, in the comments, they express concerns about courses causing students to lose interest in science. The teachers also report that they do not have enough time to teach. I don't think you'll ever find a science teacher who feels they have enough time. There are new discoveries every year that impact school curricula. Teachers report that they do not feel we should have the same courses at all schools. This is consistent with parents and administrators. The teachers reported that they felt the rigor of courses was appropriate, however, later in the survey, they expressed concerns about the force in motion course in ninth grade. In terms of grading practices, only fifty-five percent of the teachers are in favor of a district-wide grading practices. Sixty-seven percent would agree to it at the school level, but seventy-eight percent favorite for if it's the same course, to look at grading practices and grading scales. At the high schools, oftentimes at semester, we change teachers, even though it's a year-long course, this often causes some concern, did everybody really get to what they were supposed to get to before these kids came to them? So that contributes a little confusion. Textbooks, that's an interesting one. Thirty percent, seven percent report that they rarely or never use the textbook, thirty-two percent use the text sometime, and thirty-two percent use the text often and very often. Go figure. Major findings by the high school teachers continue. They feel like we have sufficient course offerings. They feel like they have concerns about the force in motion course in ninth grade, they are concerned that it's not appropriate because the students are not proficient on the mathematics required in the current course. The Common Core sequence, the teachers are split as to whether we should do that or not, yet we have three different sequences going on, but all of those reasons, all those sequences are based on the belief of what's best for students. There is not support for common assessments for the core courses. However, assessments in Biology I and Biology II have been developed and are currently being used, and chemistry teachers have begun discussing the content of a district assessment. High school parents believe that Parkway offers sufficient higher-level courses, yet only fifty-nine point six percent are satisfied with the number of courses, and sixty-two percent are satisfied with the type of courses offered. They believe that grading practices are fair, their confidence in the teacher is at sixty-six percent, that was much higher at the middle level. Parents believe their child is appropriately challenged, they report few opportunities for parent involvement, and feel they are not receiving adequate communication from teachers. And once again, in spite of the teacher websites, infinite campus, et cetera, parents want emails. They also felt like their amount of homework was appropriate, seventy percent, I thought that was pretty good. Major findings from high school students. The students feel like we have appropriate challenging courses, they rate the rigor of honors courses appropriate. However, in their comments, the students stated that the level of rigor of regular classes is too low, and that for honors is too high. They're looking for something in the middle. We heard some of that from our students who participated in the town hall meetings during the Project Parkway meetings, and our honors courses are fine, but it's, what can we do to bring up the regular courses, is what their concern is. Seventy-three percent say they're learning a lot in science, they report that when struggling, the top resource for them is their teachers. They know what's expected, and eighty-five percent of them feel like their teachers are knowledgeable. The preferred way to learn in class is with labs. Skip that slide. Ninth grade science, I had to take that one out. Teachers are concerned that force in motion, as a ninth grade course, is not developmentally appropriate due to mathematical concerns and lack of inspiration to take more science classes. Only twenty-three percent of students find the course meaningful. We're going to have to do some work with this course, it's not taught at the ninth grade in all of the schools, but where it is for ninth graders, it's really not, it really creates some problems. Another option that we need to look at for ninth grade is an acceleration option for qualifying freshmen, where the students go directly to honors biology. The rationale behind this is to allow students to enroll in upper-level courses faster. Seventy-seven percent of the parents surveyed support this, fifty-five percent of the teachers support it, and eighty-two percent of the administrators support this accelerated option. Parkway students have scored above the state average every year. The difference in scores from two thousand ten to two thousand eleven is only point three percent, but an increase of six point seven percent since two thousand nine. Additional data is found in the notebook, in the appendices. Over the last five years with the high school, obviously the most pronounced thing that's occurred is the new facilities and the equipment. We purchased new texts back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We realigned Biology to align with the end-of-course assessment, that required some changes in our courses, and we've done curriculum work with all the courses as we brought in the new textbooks. The curriculum work's been ongoing in every grade level for every course at the high school level. Teachers have already developed common assessments, and additional common assessments are being created, and as part of it is occurring as part of the PLC work, that they're coming up with the common assessments. Recommendations for high school. We need to tackle ninth grade science, and I already have the plan and I have the date set, and we just need it to happen. It will be a challenge, but we can do it. We need to look at the acceleration for honors for ninth graders, is that a direction we want to go? If so, do we want it for all our students? Do we need to have common district prerequisites? We started with seventeen courses that did not, we're down to three, so we're getting close. We've got to work on communication with parents, the coordinator, I need to communicate more, the middle school administrators, communication is just all throughout this thing, and we just really have to work on that. Also, we're looking at trying to add more project lead the way courses. We're doing it this year with biomedical science. However, as enrollment is declining, it's hard to bring in new courses because you don't have the enrollment to keep them going, so that's going to be an interesting challenge for us. I think, the other thing is that, no, no, we're going to go right onto this one here. Here's our overall ratings. I'm going to skip that one, Melanie. This is our overall rating from our teachers, parents, and administrators. There are some really bright spots here, but there are some spots that are not very good, and we don't feel comfortable with those. And, you know, parents at elementary and middle, I think communication is the key. I think they don't know enough to really support the program as it could be. High school, teachers are very pleased with it, the parents are, and the administrators. So high school comes out pretty strong. And elementary, I think we just need to get the reading piece with the writing piece with the hands-on piece, and then we'll have a full package that I think people will understand and find successful. What lies ahead? There's a lot going on in science education right now. The big buzzword is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It's being offered as any company that's putting anything out, any book that's coming out, it's all STEM. There's also the Common Core for Content Literacy that has come out. We also have a document out now called the Framework for Science, and we're developing the new generation of science standards that are due out in December supposedly. These new science standards will be quite a change from what we're currently doing. There is a strong connection with engineering. It has three dimensions, the cross-cutting themes, scientific and engineering practices, and disciplinary core ideas. They're not using the term inquiry, they're making the science practices is what we used to call inquiry, and then they have another circle that is the engineering practices. So this is going to add a whole new lens for us to look through to plan our courses. In terms of district recommendations, we need to make sure that we're aligned better with the mission and vision. I think we are, I just don't think we know we are, and I think part of that's an awareness, which kind of leads to communication. And so that just has to be a common thing that needs to be worked on. Instructional strategies and curriculum alignment are going to be something we're going to be dealing with over the next six years with all of these changes coming up. Continue to hire the best. Parkway does a very good job of hiring the best, and as we go on through these years, we just need to keep hiring the best. Professional development, we need to continue, and we need to find some ways to get some content within the district as well as some in the St. Louis area, and encourage more of our teachers to participate. And we need to do a selection of resources in the coming years, in the next year, and we need to really look carefully at that because the dynamics have changed. You know, do you buy books, do you get textbooks, you know, what do you do now? It's really, the playing field has changed. That is my report about the science program. Do you have questions? Yes?
Becky, thank you very much. A lot of work has gone into us, we have some great things happening in science, some great teachers. I'd like to take you in a little bit different direction though, and just see how you feel about this. I'm excited when I see what we've done with a system-wide approach to communication arts, the new English language arts, the way we've stepped out into math in a very innovative way, and there's been some pain in that, but it's also good, it's a system-wide approach to get growth in our students. Also, social studies is doing the same thing, but I wonder if we can find a way to do that in science where we have a system-wide approach to it also. When I look at the curriculum, well, I'll just say something here in a minute. You said just a little bit at the end about STEM. Project Lead the Way is pretty exciting when you go out there and look at what's happening at many schools that's like PLC, that's not new. Let me just read you something that I kind of like when I think about this happening in the science area, system-wide for Parkway. Project Lead the Way classroom, here's what kind of got me. It's a classroom that is engaging and a thought-provoking place, where students develop critical thinking skills, it's starting to sound like our mission, through hands-on, project-based learning, preparing them to take on real-world challenges. Students will have the opportunity to create, design, build things like robots and cars, applying what they are learning in math and science to the world's grand challenges. While the STEM subject matter is rigorous, the approach is never rigid. That's because the Project Lead the Way program provides a flexible curriculum platform that can customize to meet the specific needs of your academic environments. I would, as one board member, I'd like to see us really embrace that kind of curriculum.
We currently have two science teachers at two different buildings who are going to be teaching a Project Lead the Way course. The Project Lead the Way is an ideal program. The mission that needs to happen is for science teachers to begin to realize that they need to embrace that rather than say, oh, that's in that department over there, but we're purists over here. And, you know, so it's like, we have to cross some boundaries, and we need, and these people who are pioneers out there are going to start it for us, and then we're going to propose some more next fall so that we can continue to add to that offering, because I think it is an excellent program.
I think what every board member would say is, and we've always said this, it's about the kids. We have great teachers, but it's really about the kids and what we're preparing them for. I want to see them be in a class where they feel engaged, and, you know, I think of some of the things that are happening, we have great potential partners here in this area, the nursing, the biomedical, and just so many things with Monsanto, Pfizer. You just look around, there's great ways that we can get these kids engaged in real things that happen, and then I think they'll relate it to what they can do in their lives a lot better. It's interesting, West had the best end-of-course score in biology, but it has the worst facility. So that maybe tells you something about how they're engaged, and we would, I believe in the facilities that we've built and that we'll do at West, but I think engaging students can, you know, they can do a lot if they feel engaged. And I think that a system-wide approach such as Project Lead the Way and the STEM things that are coming is just a good way to go.
As a matter of fact, one of the resources that the middle school teachers are looking at right now is a project-based learning program, and we're considering that along with our other textbook-style adoptions. And we've had two teachers pilot it this spring, and we're going to do some more pilots in the fall with it, because it's, as I look at it and I see, it just merges with these various things that we're talking about. So it's, unfortunately, it's a little hard to do it all the way up the line in science, but, you know, the two ends need to talk to each other.
Well, I know we can do it, I saw what we did with social studies and math and com arts, so I know we can have that kind of system-wide approach too with our science.
Would you give me a refresher, please?
Yes.
Common Core?
Yes.
And now we have these new generation science standards, which I know are coming out in December, right?
Supposedly.
So what is the difference between those?
The Common Core has been developed for communication arts and for mathematics. There's a component in the communication arts Common Core that is writing in content areas of history and science, reading in content areas of history, social studies, and science. So there's a piece within the Common Core that the subject area teachers need to look at and to be incorporating those skills into our curriculum. The new generation science standards is going to focus on the science learning. What are the key concepts, what are the understandings, what are the practices that they need to follow to make it happen?
And with this coming out, I mean, can you use your crystal ball? Have you heard how much, you know, is it going to change, what's going to be different?
I think there's going to be a lot that's different. I was on a focus group that gave feedback for the initial document, and the engineering piece, which takes me right back to the Project Lead the Way, and it's like, when I look at that program and I look at what's coming out, I almost wish ninth grade would just be Project Lead the Way. But it really, the engineering piece is going to be very dramatically different, and the engineering design process will be very different for us. And supposedly, it will have less content, and if the less is more, I haven't seen anybody accomplish that yet, but we'll wait and see if that can happen.
Julie thinks that's funny.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you for that. It's hard to keep all of them straight. And I imagine this is going to be a major renovation of our science curriculum when it comes out. Is that what you think, or not?
I think it has the potential to do that. I think we have to watch and see where it begins to impact assessments, because one of the concerns is, will we still be taking the EOC courses, but then we're supposed to be doing the new generation science standards? You know, I don't want the people to get caught in the middle there, and then when it starts to impact assessment, it will have to inform instruction, and then I think we'll have to change some of our thinking.
Now I understand why Julie was laughing. Okay, well, I think we need to look toward the future, and, you know, we hear constantly about how science and engineering fields are lacking, and I think we need to do a better job of preparing our students. So I think it's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that we can successfully implement, so it's going to be a lot of hard work, we know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I guess my biggest concern about data in this report is the dog that doesn't bark, and that's, we've got a black hole once our students leave the district. If you look at national data in science and technology, the attrition rate for college freshmen who enter into a science or math degree and don't complete it is appalling. I assume the same is true for our graduates, because we don't have any data that says anything different. Is that correct?
Nathan? Where's Nathan? Was that data what they were planning to go into?
You mean the graduate survey?
Uh-huh, the graduate survey?
No, that's what they were actually in.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a survey of last year's graduates.
Okay, they did do a survey, and we had like a hundred thirty-nine?
Yeah, it wasn't that many.
That were into- That were into those fields. I mean, it was respectable, but it wasn't, you know, a major group.
But again, I think the piece we need to know is, the weed-out courses in universities are usually in the first and second semester.
Exactly.
So we don't know what the, what our, the attrition rate for our graduates is. And I guess, I know we've got mandates, and the state and the feds will always have their requirements. But I think we should at least attempt some investigation into what, what does a successful freshman candidate in STEM look like? And what are we missing as a country?
Yeah.
In how to, how to get there. So it's more of a philosophical question, but maybe for our immediate concern is, how do we, how do we get that data for our students? And if we got to bribe them to get it, I'm in favor of spending a little money on that front. You got it. You write it down.
You know, having great facilities is one thing, but it's what goes on in those facilities that really matters. So we really need to get students motivated, and I don't think a new building's, our new facility is just a mean, the only...
Certainly, if you watched, was it One Million Minutes? The quality of the, the science candidates coming out of really scruffy-looking labs in India and China. Ought to be a slap in our face. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on that.
Sure.
You know, you commented, and I think we all believe that, we have state-of-the-art facilities in at least, you know, three of the high schools and all. But when we develop these facilities, we're assuming that the previous facilities were not adequate to really deliver the program at the level that we would expect. So I guess the question is, what, what has changed in the delivery system and the enrichment of the programs that we were not able to do in the old facilities that we could do in the new facilities? Do you think there's a change if you go into a science classroom, that you'll see something different or not?
I think in some cases you will. You know, I haven't really taken it down as quantitative data, but in my conversations with teachers and my classroom visits, it's like, oh, I'm now able to do this because, now I'm able to do this because. And, you know, it'd be very interesting. I, I would like to send out sort of a little survey to those people in the new buildings and just say, give me examples of things that you're able to do now that you couldn't do before, and I'd be happy to share that with the board. Be interesting to find out exactly, because I just know anecdotal things. I don't have anything systematic.
Well, I think it'd be worthwhile to see what is the difference. You know, how much more technology is being used, how much more experimentation?
Yes.
Basically, is there any more involvement with universities in terms of research? You know, I guess that's a big question. That's a tremendous investment, and I was a science major in college, and these facilities are much nicer than the college I went to.
Yes.
So I, I think it's really important to know, you know, what is different that we're really enriching our students' education in science that much more? Because we have greater resources, we have these wonderful labs, we have technology, et cetera. So I think that'd be worthwhile. The other thing, and thank you very much for responding to the questions that you had. And I think in many of the questions, you indicated that the PLCs would be dealing with some of those issues or questions. How is that exactly going to happen in terms of coordinating all that and ensuring that these areas are being addressed?
That's a very good question.
Well, you don't even have to answer it. I think the most important thing is that something is being done to address those important questions.
I think it's very, there's a lot of optimism about the experiences that teachers will have when they get together and sit down together, and they look at student work, and they look at student data, and they talk about their teaching strategies. Those, several of these things that everybody's all over the board on are going to come together because of that collaboration. And I think that will strengthen what we're doing. Different buildings, different departments are at different levels of already implementing that or far away from implementing that. So it's going to kind of be, come along in stages. That will be basically a building-level process. And from the district, it's really hard, I can't be at all the PLCs, and I can't, you know, I'm not in charge of PLCs. But one of my challenges is to try to find out, are there some strategies or some information that I would like to share that the teachers would have access to when they're working in their PLCs? And it's a fine line to walk in terms of, you know, you can't be running a PLC for them. But also, sometimes they need some new information to help their discussion. And so I'm looking at ways that I can sort of insert some information along the way.
Yep, great. The other thing regarding students going on to college in science, do we have any follow-up studies or any, any kind of research that tells us that our students are succeeding in college science courses because of our program?
No, we have a five-year graduate follow-up survey that we traditionally try to put out. The response rate has always been very, very low. And so that's why I commented when Bruce was talking about spending some extra money to try and target that now. We may hold them too, because really the key, I think, is if we can get good follow-up on the five-year graduate follow-up survey, it will give me a problem.
I'm sure Bruce will be happy to check.
And do they truly address, you know, science programs as well as other disciplines?
Well, if you mean the five-year follow-up.
Right.
We can write it off, I mean, probably if we really sit down and talk about how are we going to put this thing out and make sure it's an effective survey, we'll write it the way we want it to. Right now, we have a graduate follow-up survey that goes up to last year's graduates and the previous year's graduates. And we just designed that one this year with the, with the, with the group of staff within the district, and really made it ask questions about mission and vision and things like that. So we'll be able to design it however we want, you know, to get whatever information we need.
That's great. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Just, just to be honest, I mean, that's, I think a struggle, but I know, I think Nathan, Desi, and a few others are trying to really think of unique ways to gather that information. You just can't send a survey anymore and expect to get, you know, you gotta, there's gotta be some incentive or some way to do this.
Money, money talks.
I'm going to put them money, crispy bean donuts.
Crispy something else.
I just want to comment, I feel like, you know, these, Becky's here tonight, and having been around a little while, kind of like Kathy and Bonnie and a few others, you know, it's, I mean, it was probably, I don't know, twenty-five years ago when we first would have started to say, are we really teaching English Language Arts, Com Arts? And there was a revolution there, and there was a revolution in math, you know, fifteen years ago or so. And I just sense we're on the verge of a science revolution, because we've really seen a whole language, you know, approach. And it was controversial, and so was mathematics. And so I think we're on the verge, and I think these, these standards coming forth, hopefully in December or later in the year, will really be the, be helpful, because I think we really need the stir up and shake up. You know, what's going on here at Parkway is not unique, and I think Becky's leading, you know, she's on the front end of this, but I think she really needs that, you need that, that push of the standards. And then we really will use that, I think, to move people and to get into the Project Lead the Way, to STEM, the engineering. I mean, there's just so many potentials here. So I suspect it, and it won't be easy work, just like it was in math and, and Com Arts. It's going to stir a lot of controversy, but it, but it's the right kind of discussion to have. But really, the last science evolution we had was Sputnik in fifty-seven, to be honest. I suspect, I suspect there hasn't been, there's not too many people in this room that were even, you know, pretty actively involved in education in nineteen fifty-seven. But that was the thing that really spurred change, and it really is, we haven't done much, a whole lot. I mean, we've done a lot, not a whole lot of revolution in science since then, truthfully.
Make a follow-up comment to Dr. Tyson. I think there may be a model out there, and if I'm paying for it, I want real efficiency here. The military medicine is, has an ongoing study called the Millennium Cohort Study. And I think there was design upfront where you identify the cohort at specific points in time. And I think their, their bribes are pretty minimal, you know, like an occasional hat or a golf towel or something like that. But I think, as a member of that cohort, simply being identified as a, as a representative. And I've, I've been diligent about following up with surveys for about fifteen years now. So maybe that's, maybe that's a model we could use. If you identify the seniors and say, and I don't know what a, what a statistically significant slice would be, but maybe that's a way to go about it instead of counting on random responses to a blanket issue. I'll show you my paraphernalia from the Millennium Cohort Study. Give you some ideas.
Golf outing or something.
Becky, I have some questions about what the process will be once the standards are released in December or whenever they come. What, what will be your process, and I'm specifically talking about the high school course offerings? So when these new standards are introduced, how long do you think it will take you and your groups of teachers that, that, you know, do your committee work to make the change? You know, is it over the course of several years?
I think so.
And what will be the process?
I think the process, well, it could come from a couple of different directions. I think we would have to sit down, one process is to take a look at what we are doing, and then look at what's expected in the other ones and make adjustments. Another approach is to really just kind of say, hey, you know, we're starting with a blank slate, which would be my ideal way to do it. Whether we can pull that off that way, or whether it has to come through looking at what we have, or it's going to take a combination. We're really going to have to look at what they're asking us to do, and it's going to be tied to assessment. Until it's connected to assessment, teachers will have a hard time embracing it. I think, I think we can bring in some things sooner, but I think we're just going to have to watch. Our curriculum material is going to be available to support this. Do we buy textbooks next year, or do we wait for a few more years and see what's changing? You know, we've got decisions to make along the way.
That kind of makes sense to me.
Yeah, it's like, we were trying to adopt a middle school program this spring, and I said, we can't do that right now. It's just not the right time to do it. So technology's changing, the world, you know, is changing, and some of the publishers are showing you a product that says, when the new generation standards come out, we will automatically update our books to have them available to you.
For free?
If, there's one, two publishers out right now, and what they produce for middle school is what I call a workbook, but it's an interactive science. You write in it. It's sort of a paperback book. And you purchase it for, say, seven years. Every year, you get rid of the books that the kids used, and you get a new set. So if you buy a seven-year subscription, if things change, year three, you might get different books with different things in them because of the changes that have occurred. Which is really not, you know, that is at least a way to be able to, you know, make the changes as quickly as possible. So I think it's going to be a matter of, we're going to have to really study what's expected. Come up with some experiences and ideas to be able to infuse into the teacher some new ways of thinking about these things. And I think that will take, take time in trying to get people on board. And it may be that, you know, we'll just need some pioneers to start out.
How will you be able to deliver, develop the teachers so they will be able to deliver the content in courses that we have not yet offered?
I think we access resources available in the St. Louis area with science people, scientists, people in the field. We may need to look at some national consultants who could come in and work with our teachers to bring them this direction. I really think it is going to take some infusion from outside, rather than completely just trying to do it in our own territory. I think we're in need to have a little shove from someone else. So I think there's, there's some national people that I think would be able to help us.
Okay, I mean, I guess that's not just a one-time.
Oh, no.
You know, so I guess we're going to have to plan our budget accordingly.
It's going to make it more challenging right now as to, you know, when is the right time to put the funds where? Because we don't want to make a decision, and then two years from now, it's like, well, this doesn't work anymore because we changed everything. And so that's why we're kind of looking carefully at what we're going to choose.
You answered a lot of my questions already. I just wanted to talk for a minute about the high school science course offering.
Uh-huh.
You know, you and I have had these conversations before. And my question is, is, you know, when you're a student at high school A, and you want to take a class that's only offered at high school B, what are school districts in the United States doing, large school districts like we are, to enable their students to take a class that's not offered at their school? I mean, you know, somebody's got to be doing something out there that we can learn from.
Sure. Well, if I remember, Tom Swaboda at a meeting not too long ago was talking about how schools are using technology, and so that you would have sort of a link to the teacher, to the student, and so they would be taking the class from distance learning perspective. But it could still be live, video, et cetera. Some schools are doing that.
Yeah.
And networking, a lot of rural schools started doing that because they didn't have a physics teacher. So they'd find a physics teacher and have four schools kind of check in with them electronically. But, you know, we've looked at, I've been in meetings where we've talked about a student wanting to take a course at a different school, but our schools are on different timeframes.
Right.
So we can't, can't go out there. So I think a technological link may be the, the best way we can try to deal with that.
Right. I mean, I think that would work in a lecture-type class, but I don't know what you would do with labs.
I think they would have to, there's also a lot of virtual labs. That's another technology resource that's out there that we just haven't tapped, we've just tapped the surface of that. There's a lot of virtual labs out there.
All right, and one last question is, when we were looking at the data, Chris and I were just talking a minute ago that West High, their biology EOC, you know, seems to be doing markedly better than the other schools. And is it, is it schedule-related? Is it, certainly it's not facility-related, because you're the last to get the facility.
Yeah.
What's going on with biology at West High that they can share with everybody else?
I think I'm accurate on this. I would really want to double-check. But I don't think the students change teachers. They start biology with this teacher, and they go the whole year in biology with that teacher. And I think that has to make a difference. I've observed in a classroom when they just started the second semester, but the teacher had all new kids, and she's saying, well, now, before, when you did blah, blah, blah. And they all said, no, we didn't do that. And so you're, you're really messing with your alignment.
Right.
When you add that other variable in there. And I know at West, they start with that teacher, they teach that as a year-long course, and that's the way it goes.
And do you happen to know, this might be too detailed of a question for a coordinator to know, but is, I know their schedule's modified block or hybrid block or whatever.
Yes.
Is science something that's taught every day, or is it block at West?
I think, I don't know.
I couldn't expect you to know that. I just, you know, kind of speaking out loud.
I think it is. I think it is, but it's, yeah, I would really have to check into that.
It's actually a combination.
Is it a combination?
Depending on what course it is?
Well, course and what instructor preference.
Instructor preference. Well, I was, I was going to ask, you know, how long does it take? Classes that do labs, do they take longer, or do the labs not take as long? And, I mean, is it more beneficial to have a shorter class or a longer class? You know, I mean, I know math, you know, I'm pretty sure those teachers have a preference, pretty sure social studies teachers have a different preference. But I'm just wondering what, what's more appropriate for a science lab-type course?
Probably a combination.
Combination, okay.
I think that would be a stronger model myself than the block. I taught in a block setting, and you make more transitions during ninety minutes than you do with a different amount of time. And every transition takes more time. So in a way, I, you think, oh, you have twice as much class time, so you would do twice as much of your content as you're moving along. And that's not how it happens. And so personally, I like the model that they have at West. And so, personally, I like the model that they have at West because you get the longer time periods and you can plan some of these longer-term labs that they need to do. But they have some days where they can be shorter, focused, get on, and keep moving.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm sure we could go on all night.
I don't think all these people would like that.
Well, I think we're all really interested in, in science and how it progresses, and I think we're all really anxious to see what the changes will be when they come out in December. And I hope that you'll have a way that you can kind of give us a memo or something.
I definitely will.
When the, when the standards are released, you know, so we can just kind of be felt like, feel like we're being kept in the loop.
I'll put together some periodically, some sort of summaries and share them with you all so that you can kind of watch the progression along with me.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I could just leverage on that, the data regarding the biology end-to-course, the distribution of the below basic counts in the different schools is, seems to me, you've got some schools at almost ten percent below basic, and then another school which overall doesn't rank as highly countywide with less than half of the, the number of below basics. Is that a, is that a delivery of curriculum issue or is that a?
I, I think.
Doesn't look to be a demographic issue, but.
I don't think it is necessarily a demographic issue. In some instances, it might be. Maybe we have, maybe we don't have our expectations high enough in the class. Maybe we're not differentiating enough and really monitoring whether the students are getting it as they go along. These strategies are used heavily in the middle school and the elementary buildings and in high school. It's really not their way that they operate necessarily. And because we do have students who struggle and do need additional help, which, I go back to the PLC, I think it has potential to reduce that because that student's progress is going to be monitored so much more regularly and so much of a more consistent manner that I think there, more of those students are going to get pulled up. And I think we're going to see a change in that. I have high hopes for the PLCs.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second that the Board of Education approved the science evaluation as presented.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to reports, twelve point zero, twelve point zero-one, the DAD PMI Action Team Update. I'd like to call in Dr. Julie Collins, Coordinator of Assessment, and John Barrow, Coordinator of Program Monitoring Intervention.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Calando. Julie and I have the honor of coming tonight and representing the work of a large group of Parkway professionals, the DAD PMI Action Team. DAD PMI, what's worse, right? Let's see how many acronyms we can scrunch together.
I'm still trying to learn. I have to note all my country members.
So, so let me see if we can clear it up a little bit. DAD PMI stands for District Assessment and Data for the Purpose of Progress Monitoring and Intervention. Still a little hazy?
Yeah, probably.
So, but this is the group that develops the district assessment plan and supports the use of that data for our schools and our teachers and our teams of teachers to respond in a timely manner to meet the needs of our learners. So, that's really what our group is about. As we, we leave the comfort of what's familiar in terms of how we're working and we try to find better and different ways to accomplish our mission, this was a quote that resonated with us, and "One does not discover new lands without consenting to lose sight of the shore for a very long time." And so, being who we are, Julie and I picked that up as a challenge to see exactly how far we could stretch a metaphor. So, our update tonight is, it's a voyage from launch to current discoveries. And what we're going to be looking at is the course is charted, so our foundation of mission and strategic plan, all hands on deck, our organization, our membership, who we have involved with the work, rolling in the same direction, how we're coordinating that work, course corrections, how we adjust along the way based on what we've learned, ship to shore, our communication plan, discoveries, what our progress is up to this point, and what's on the horizon, what's happened next.
So, as we began, we began with the end in mind. Our destination is the Parkway Mission, and I keep saying this, and I'm going to say it one more time at least, and that is that I don't get tired of the Parkway Mission. I think it's absolutely eloquent and absolutely describes what it is we're all about, which is to develop students who are capable, curious, and competent, who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. So, as John eloquently described, our acronym, that's very lengthy, as you can imagine, we cannot reach our mission without having an assessment plan that's effective, that actually monitors, helps us monitor student progress, and then having response to those students so that they can become what we envision in our mission. Not only do we have a Parkway Mission, but we have a course that is charted through our five-year strategic plan. And as you well know, through the efforts of Project Parkway over the last several years, the Board approved last May, a wonderful five-year plan with goals directly tied back to our mission, objectives that are measurable, and we also have very specific action steps that we are enacting to achieve that mission. So, as John mentioned, one of the reasons we have such a lengthy acronym is that we have combined two formerly existing teams. Previously, we had what was very cleverly named the DAD Team. I say cleverly because I think I named it. At ten o'clock at night, it seems clever to me. But, so we had a team that was formerly known as the Assessment Committee that had these following initiatives to be mission-driven and to use that mission to develop an assessment plan. We were monitoring district-wide progress and helping enable staff and buildings to monitor their own progress in their buildings and the progress of their students. We focused on assessment literacy, helping everyone understand our assessments, strengthening classroom assessments, and being transparent with our data both inside the district and then beyond with our parents.
And the progress monitoring intervention portion of that was, previously was a building-based but district-supported initiative. And what we were doing was trying to operationalize and implement response to intervention concepts. Response to intervention is a, is a framework of prevention intervention, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. But as you can see, there's lots of overlap in terms of, really what this work is about is how do we use the information and data that we have to make the best decisions to meet our students' needs? And so, part of that is, are our practices, our curriculum, our interventions, are they research-based? Not just research-based, but evidence-based? So, are they supported in the research literature, but also, do we have evidence that what we're doing and the population needs that we have, that those are being effective? And so, that of course requires a lot of performance data. We also need the comprehensive assessment system to do some very specific things within a progress monitoring intervention framework. And there's been some talk about professional learning communities and collaborative teams. So, having those collaborative teams use a database, problem-solving process to try to find the way that we can improve results for all of our kids.
And so, this visual represents the previous work of the DAD Team, which you can see the strategic plan was the center of that work even as it was in development at that time. And we had four hubs of the work that we're doing related to assessment, communication, literacy, developing the district assessment plan, data transparency, and also quality classroom assessment. So, this was our, our work of the prior years.
Okay, and this is a framework, a model that some of you might be familiar with. It's, once again, it, it represents two essential concepts for response to intervention. And the two concepts first, one is that there needs to be a continuum of support that meets all of the students' needs. And particularly when you look at our mission, we need supports that are going to allow our students to lift up their performance in order to meet our expectations of mission. So, different students might require more support or different kinds of support in order to achieve that level of performance. So, if you look at the diagram, it goes from a shade of green up to red. And what that, those color changes, those gradients represent is that increasing intensity of those levels of support. So, the bottom is universal, that's the core, it's a very preventative proactive approach, and it's intended to address the needs of all learners. But, once again, we know that some students may need something a little bit more, and so they move to the next level is targeted, and that's usually for small groups of kids for usually shorter periods of time, and it's that, that quick response to get them back into the universal level and benefiting from the core program. And then, the intensive level is for those very few students, maybe individuals or very small groups that might need more intensive work, that might need to go on for longer. The other concept that's represented is, is a problem-solving process, and it's appropriate that we're following the science presentation because really what this is, is applying the scientific method to our work. It's really action, research, and practice. And there are four guiding questions that derive that, and one is, what's the problem? So, specifically, what is the issue that we need to be prioritizing and addressing? The second one is, why do we think it's happening? This is, this is a critical question that I think human tendency, we tend to rush past it, we want to get to the solution, but we don't know what the solution is until we understand what those underlying root causes of the problem might be. Then, what are we going to do about it? And is it working? Simple questions, but using data in a systematic way at all levels of the system, we can really improve the results of our students if we're, if we're doing this on all cylinders. I would like to make one other note. If you, if you notice, it's a solid pyramid. Sometimes you see it where it's split down the middle, and they talk about an academic side or a social, emotional, or behavioral side. In Parkway, we really are believing that the concept is that those two things are merged, that, that sometimes they're separated and categorized for simplicity, but in action, those two things go hand in hand. And our mission strongly supports that, our learning principles, it's evident in what we're doing in Parkway, and so we thought that this solid model was a better representation of that work.
So, as we brought two teams together, our foundation was the strategic plan. And so, what you can barely see here, but hopefully more clearly on your screens, are action steps that were identified as priority actions based on this year's, or the five-year plan, but they were identified as priority objectives or action steps for this particular year. Just to summarize the actions that you see here that were lifted directly from our strategic plan, we have actions related to improving assessment quality and effective use of classroom assessment, and you notice that this is a theme carried over from the diagram before of what our work as a DAD Team had been. We have actions related to improved grading practice, which also came up in tonight's science presentation as well, and increasing our capacity to provide quality feedback to students and to their parents so that instruction and their work can be improved with that. Increasing parent involvement and understanding of our assessment system, assessing curiosity and creativity, which as you can see aligns directly back to mission. If we're going to have this as our mission, we need to understand how we assess that. And then, in addition, implementing interdisciplinary cornerstone assessment, doesn't have an acronym, but it has a lot of syllables, which we'll talk about in just a moment what that means, as well as a benchmark assessment system. And finally, on the, the green side, which represents the work that John just referenced, some key actions related to implementation of progress monitoring in a more systematic way across the district by identifying district structures and conducting district-level needs assessment in order to improve and monitor student performance. So, with all of that work, we needed many hands. Unfortunately, we did have, do have wonderful representation on this committee. We have representation from every school. We have, in every case, we have at least one member who has, who comes to our meetings and participates wholly in work teams, which we'll describe in just a moment. So, we have at least one representative member from every school, and in many cases, we have more than one, if they have a progress monitoring coach who's also attended, or perhaps they bring another colleague with them, and so we welcome that. We have representation from our teaching, learning, and accountability department. All of our curriculum coordinators serve on the DAD PMI Team and serve on that, that team and are able to be a part of those discussions on the front end. Special Services has representation on our committee as well as Technology and Superintendent's Action Team. So, we're well represented across many aspects of the district. As we've hinted, this is a lot of work. So, to be able to accomplish the work, what we figured out early on is that we needed to essentially divide and conquer. And so, out of those initial action steps came some work that very cleanly laid out into five work teams. Assessing curiosity and creativity is led very capably by Denise Papillo and Toby McQuarrie. Assessment quality and use became a work team led by Derek Scott. We have a cornerstone assessment team that is now led by Jennifer Stanfield and Darcy Brady. Feedback and grading has been led by Jason Adams, and then the progress monitoring work has been led by Corey Singh. So, we have district representation leading each of those teams.
So, how do we get all these teams working together, right? That's, that's a challenge we're going to talk about now. So, in order to coordinate, we had, we laid out a template for a work plan for each of the teams. And that work plan had some similar components that we knew that were going to be critical for moving this work forward. And so, as the teams developed those, they, there was research, data collection, vocabulary, which seems like a simple thing but can really trip up and slow things down if we're using different words to describe the same thing. So, we had a conceptual framework, going visual with what it was that we're trying to accomplish. Once again, really helps to everybody get on the same page. Communication, feedback input, implementation, and evaluation plan. And so, within, with all of that, so each team has their plan, they're working on it, but how do we know what each other might be doing? An important thing, so we don't have collisions or we're going in totally separate directions. So, we have internal collaboration and communication plans, including a website that where all of the work products for the teams can be posted and teams can go look at that. We use time during our agenda to, to make those connections, and then from that connections, the work team leaders and participants are also finding time outside of that to work. So, a tool to help us with that is something that we just started using, and it's a Gantt chart. And this is just a sample of it. And if you see, we coded each of the work teams a different color and listed the specific tasks from those work plans in a, in a time-sequenced fashion. So, the, the top row going across are months and years, the task down the left column, and it's a stair step that leads out for our five-year plan. So, this helps us know if another team is doing something that our work might be dependent on, we can go and see what that time sequence is. It's not meeting us needs, we can go negotiate what's happening with that, we can help out, we can find those connections. So, this has been a tool to help us go visual so that, once again, we can try to better coordinate all of the work that we're doing.
Somehow, I ended up having to deliver the bad news that we've had course corrections along the way.
Really.
I know, I guess that's why. And so, to talk about some of those, it's really not bad news, I guess, because any time we accomplish and begin to accomplish work of this scope, we can imagine that we've had to make some adjustments. Our first one really was trying to figure out how to get the work done, and so that was the evolution of developing work teams. Just as one example of how the work has evolved over the course of even one year, initially, the team that is now known as the interdisciplinary cornerstone assessment team had cornerstone and benchmark assessments underneath their purview. And what they let us know is that that was too much for one team. They really had plenty on their hands related to cornerstone, and that was going to consume their time in meaningful way. And so, we needed to pull that work, and actually, it better fit with the department or with our TLA department work. We already had a benchmark assessment system started, and so we've carried that on through TLA. So, that was just one example of a correction that we made along the way. And then, John alluded to this, we've had a difficult time meeting only two hours per month, and we know that our work teams are meeting beyond that time, but that's our allotment of time. And so, finding a way to balance the needs of those individual work teams as they delve deeply into specific work with the needs of the whole. For example, we've consumed a lot of time developing a new assessment plan, which you'll hear soon about, not in this meeting, but at upcoming memo at least. And so, we've had to try to balance that whole group, small group time, and we never, it's just like in the classroom, they, the kids always want more time, the people there always want more time to work in their work teams, and we sometimes fall short on that.
So, with the action steps, some lessons learned from implementing, you know, through the work of DAD PMI and other action teams, we're finding some places that we can improve, those actual steps that we're outlining to accomplish our strategic plan. So, where we can do, there's, there's just some places. So, where we can do, there's, there's just some places that we are finding some redundancy. We're finding some places where we can improve alignment to the measurable objectives and goals. We're finding places that we can provide better direction and detail for actual implementation. And also assessing the number of action steps to find those that we think might provide us with the greatest leverage for impact. So, those are some things that we're learning and adjusting along the way.
Ship to Shore references our communication strategy, and as we mentioned, it's been a challenge. The workflow that you see, or the flow chart that you see before you, is a structure that's intended to provide that communication, not only within work teams and across various work teams, but also communicating back with superintendent's action team as appropriate, and with Project Parkway leadership. And also using the input processes that we can gain from ourselves collectively, and from, in particular, Project Parkway leadership. Just to give one example, some of you may have been in the room, we had a student panel, volunteers from our Project Parkway team, and those students did not, they were not shy at all, and we're glad, we wanted their voices. They gave us lots of information based on questions that we were asking them about feedback and grading in particular, and other assessment practices that will inform our work. So that kind of valuable feedback process is something that we need to keep in place and utilize what those students and others are telling us.
So, to discoveries, quick, just where we're at. Where, and we're going to break it down by each of our work teams in terms of the work that, that they've accomplished so far. Assessing curiosity and creativity, Toby and Denise have been leading an energetic group in this, and, and it's really pretty amazing to take some concepts that if people were questioning the feasibility. Curiosity, really? How are you going to measure that? Well, they've made it very, very feasible. They've, you know, through their research and reaching out to others who, who are experts in this field, they've, they've been able to define both of those terms in a way that we can develop some measurement. They've also created a conceptual framework, they've done updates with their team. Project Parkway did a great presentation at the last meeting that was very thought-provoking, and is getting lots of people thinking about our mission and what it's going to take to, to do that. So now, they're moving into the work of actually creating those measures. And if you look at those lists, it's, it's interesting, because it's not just measuring the student outputs, there's, there's also, what kind of environment is required for us to facilitate curious and creative learners? That's a big part of the equation. So, they're doing some very exciting work in terms of developing those rubrics and ways to measure. The other thing that they're doing is that they're finding ways to make this work more efficient by connecting with, with other teams that are doing similar kinds of work where there, there's, there are strong connections.
The assessment quality and use work team is really dedicated to researching and understanding the indicators of quality assessment, and in turn, developing tools and training for teachers that will positively impact the quality of assessments that we use, and the data that we have, and how we use that data. I would, I know that you can read the list of completed actions and, and current tasks. A couple of key words that you'll notice that might stick out to you, or that I'd like to point out, rubric and glossary. For this particular group, they have been focused on really calling out, what are the indicators? Again, as I mentioned, what are the indicators of true quality classroom assessment? How do we develop a consistent tool district-wide, not to control teachers' assessments, but rather to train them and help them have the tools they need to self-adjust and to monitor through their PLC processes? Is this truly a quality assessment that will yield the kind of data that we need to help students? So rubrics will be a key part of that. And then, just the glossary piece, the terms and definitions, as John mentioned, it is huge. We have to have our terminology in place. Liz Morrison has done a wonderful job helping us with the word of the week on Wednesday, which never fails to make me smile and be informed at the same time. So really infusing that work district-wide, and she is on this particular team, and I think that's a nice fit for her, because it's so much about the training and the vocabulary that we use to enact those processes. Cornerstone assessment, the one that really I feel is, I think we all feel, is going to be a breakthrough for Parkway. And I, I know that we're leading probably any other district in the nation in this particular area related to our mission. They have defined cornerstone assessments as we see here, and I know they're still working. Jennifer's probably cringing, because I think she's already refined this definition with her team from what they have here. But just kind of looking at the, the key points being that it is intended to assess mission and vision. And they're actually using the vision bullets from our mission and vision document to determine what it is we'll want to see from students, and what that might look like. It says that the assessment is completed, I don't know if this point or work from here, not really. It says the assessment is completed in fifth, eighth, and 12th. That's actually probably a misnomer. I think they're probably going to change that to culminating at grades five, eight, and 12. So that at those key benchmark years, students will have some kind of e-folio, as you see the method there, or some kind of project-based, real-world, authentic product to be able to share and be, just, just like a dissertation process, probably be the most knowledgeable student in their classroom about whatever topic it is that they have investigated. So it's very exciting, and we are on the ground floor of that, but they're doing tremendous work on that team. You can see from this slide, this is the work that they've already completed, including the research that went behind it and the definition. We do have within our, what will be our proposed three-year assessment plan, some plans over the next three years to field test next year, or, no, I'm sorry, research and develop next year, field test in the following year, 2013, 14, with full implementation of cornerstone assessments expected in 2014, 15. One of their key actions, that says completed, but I think that just means the planning, they're still in process with that, is the think tank, where they will bring in interested teachers from around the district to come together and really think through this. They have some initial research certainly, but they really want teachers' brains around that so that we can get the maximum buy-in. And then, they'll also be working to create a longitudinal rubric so that we can gauge the quality of those assessments. And, a final one, final piece from me, in terms of our work teams, our feedback and grading. A lot of the things, I don't want anyone on the board to panic. When it says completed, those, I want you to notice a word, it says draft. This group has really been drafting a five-year plan and really starting with some very intentional planning. It's been just a tremendous work team under the leadership of Jason Adams, and also Kevin Beckner has been on this team, and I know has provided a tremendous amount of support. They are drafting policy, looking at what it is we might need to change about board policy, and I believe they'll be ready to bring that sometime during next school year. They are utilizing the feedback that we're learning from grade, the grade three pilot, and also from the Algebra I implementation, so that we can better refine practice. And probably from the current tasks, what I'd most like to point out would be the grading feedback summit. So you're kind of hearing a theme about, the work has been started through the work teams, where they're researching, defining, understanding, and kind of developing some foundational plans. But none of the work's really going to be implemented without that teacher voice. So with the cornerstone assessment, you heard they're doing a think tank. For the feedback and grading, they're going to bring together probably some of our most knowledgeable and pioneering teachers when it comes to changing grading and feedback practices, and really learn from them, what are the elements that make this successful, and how can we then move forward with the process? Because we don't want to split people apart, we want to bring them together, is what we want to do through this process.
So the, the last team, progress monitoring, is led by Corey Sink. And, yeah, familiar pattern here, vocabulary, conceptual framework, those things have been developed this year. Also, define what quality problem solving might look like, and also identified some structures that, to support the work. The tasks that they're working on now are getting into more of the particulars, just, you know, so what are the roles between district and schools, establishing for each of those levels? What level, what does student performance look like for us to be worried enough that we might need to think about? Do they need some targeted level of support? What does it look like if we need to move to more intensive? Just that decision-making along the way. And aligning a big, big piece of this, and my office is being moved right next door to Liz Morrison, so that we can, we can work on aligning progress minor intervention with, with professional learning communities. Those things are, a couple of concepts and initiatives that go hand in hand. So, I understand I have to leave my door open so she has heat and air conditioning? Don't know about that. That's what I've been told, anyway. So, on the horizon, what's next for us? We need to continue to refine our action team structure, there are always ways to improve. Also, the communication process, just internally among the work teams. How do we all stay informed as, as all of this work moves forward? Externally, there are other stakeholder groups that we need to be reaching out to and doing a job communicating with. We also need to increase coordination with other action teams. There's huge amounts of overlap between all of our structures, and so, how are we making sure that it's working well together? And then, finding a method to broaden representatives, engage teachers, and other implementers in planning. You can probably add students and, and parents to that list as well. So how are we, how are we bringing in more voices and more thoughts around, around this work and what it needs to be? And, we need to keep working the plan. We got a great plan, we need to make sure that, that we're, we're living up to it.
This time, we're glad to, if you're still awake, we're glad to answer questions or comments. Hey, there's, you're awake, that's good.
You got my curiosity thinking a little about, a little bit about a long acronym. And actually, it might be kind of appropriate, Parkway Assessment and Process Accountability. This would be a new term, that little softer than dad, it would be Papa.
Papa.
Or if you, if you want to, if you want to put some diversity to it, a little accent there, it could be Papa.
Chris, I hope you worked on that before tonight and not during our presentation. I'm highly offended.
Classic.
That's great.
So it is 10 o'clock.
I know.
You know, and, and a lot of this, you're talking about bringing people together and defining things better. Are we also going outside of Parkway to see what's happening in other areas? So, I know we got great teachers and great thinkers.
Yeah, keep me out of it, yeah.
I got an example.
She's got to hear a funny word.
Yeah, I'll take this part. Can you tell we work really well together? I'm going to miss him. You're supposed to say you're going to miss me back. You didn't.
Leave your shoes so we're sure he's walking in your feet.
Not at all. I can think of one example of that, but I know all the work teams are definitely looking, in their research, not just to text or online research, but also to other districts. And a, a prime example would be the grading group. They have a list of, I think, 10 or more. I promised I was going to get Kevin involved, if he's still here. He is. You know how many districts?
Maybe it was about a dozen.
Okay. So about, yeah, 12 districts that, around Missouri, were working on different methods of grading systems across their, their districts. So I know that that communication has already started, and it will continue.
And Toby and Denise, in researching curiosity and creativity, they reached out to other non-academic organizations in, in the community to find out what's going on in the business world, and what does that look like as our students move into the ever-changing world?
Thank you.
I just, this is amazing.
Yeah, it is.
To put this all together, and I just kept thinking, does Dr. Wiggins know what's going on here? Does he keep in touch with us? Does he know?
Not with me personally, I don't know.
No? Well, he should. It's, it's just amazing to see, and the coordination, and how you're, you seem to be willing, all of you, to change direction and, and move things around, because that's, you know, we can't just be stuck in concrete. And it's, it's very exciting.
It is exciting, very hopeful.
And we love the, the graphics.
You like the names?
Even though this is the second time I've seen it, they were very entertaining.
But it would have been too much had we dressed as Gilligan and the skipper, wouldn't it?
Oh, I don't know, that might have, it's a lot.
For suit.
Why not Ginger and Mary Ann? I mean, come on.
Dr. Marty's not smiling.
I'm sorry. On a serious note, I, I really do, we appreciate that you're noticing process. It was difficult, and we probably exceeded 20 minutes, I don't know. But what's difficult about this report isn't, you know, giving it. We have so much content to be able to share, but we felt that the process of these teams coming together and how we structured the work related to the strategic plan was equally important to the work that's being done. And there'll be so much more to share, once we get those teacher voices and once the work gets rolling, we know you'll hear from every work team, you know, probably as soon as next year. But we thought the process really was critical to how this work has evolved and, and how aligned back to mission that we really feel that it is.
This is a, this is tough work in a, in a district our size, because, you know, a lot of, when you start talking about grading practices, and you start talking about how people monitor, so, you know, there's a lot of pulling in. So you, you really worked hard, I know, to really set the system, set the structure. And now, we're really at a place to launch, I would say, was that fair? And so, we really are building a system, you know, and, and, so it's going to take, it's taken a while to get to this point, but I was, that's because we had to really get people together and talk. And I know the meetings have been pretty lively with a lot of people, and, but a lot of, a lot of good discussion.
Your commitment shows. Yes. It really does. Anybody else?
I think you're just, that, one of the great things is you're, like, Dr. Marty said, you're building something that will potentially outlive you in this, in this particular job, or even, maybe in a Parkway.
Especially.
You know something?
No, no. Just complimenting the kind of work that's going on here, because it's something that's a model that can, can live a long time and, and help the, help Parkway.
Sustainability, yeah.
Yeah. You've got a job for a long time.
You heard it here.
I, I've just got to say, you did not stretch that analogy too far at all. I have to give that a standing ovation.
And you do know the definition of a successful sea voyage, right? Anytime you tie it up to the pier, when you get.
You made it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, before we go on to Mark, everybody stand up and just like speculate.
Everybody still awake?
No.
Gave you too much time off, didn't I? Well, good evening. Tonight is our preliminary budget discussion. We won't be asking for any motion from you, or action from you tonight, but just want to present the preliminary projections for next year, and then seek some input from you.
to present the preliminary projections for next year and then seek some input from you. Before we look forward, I'd like to look back very briefly. And I think you've seen most of this, some of you have memorized it. Operating revenues have declined over the past four years. Operating expenses have increased moderately, or about 3% annually. Operating expenses began exceeding operating revenues in 2009, '10 school year. And since then, we've used reserves to fill the gaps as we've deficit spent the last couple of years. This line chart again shows, on the top two lines, shows where revenues began being exceeded by expenses back in '09, '10. The two lower lines, the, I guess, purple one is the board policy fund balance reserve requirements. And the tan line is the actual fund balances over the past few years. And you can see we've built up reserves and then we've been spending them down the last couple of years. We expect to fall below, slightly below our minimum reserve requirements by June 30th of this year. And if you follow that line on down, you see that if we had made no changes at all for next year, we would have actually run out of money by the end of 2013, '14. So because of that, Dr. Marty pulled together an ad hoc budget committee that met seven times during the fall and established principles to guide the budget review process. The committee identified numerous cost reduction ideas and weighed each against the principles. The committee recommended reductions ranging anywhere from 7.4 million to 9.73 million over the next couple of years. And the Board of Education approved recommendations totaling approximately 8 million in ongoing expenditure reductions. Those reductions are broken down into seven categories. District administrators and departmental support staff will be reduced by $1.2 million. Operating budgets, non-staffing, will be decreased by $750,000. Greater efficiencies will generate about $950,000 in savings. Personnel supporting teachers and students will be reduced, $1.9 million. Teaching assistants and school secretarial staffing models are adjusted to reduce $1.12 million. School instructional staffing models are being adjusted to reduce $1.9 million. And we have made some adjustments to generate $160,000 in new revenues. So we expect to eliminate approximately $8 million out of our budget for the next school year. And we're doing that by eliminating 136 full-time positions and 36 part-time positions. And I do want to make it very clear, we were very fortunate to be able to make these adjustments without laying off teachers, primarily because we normally would have a large number of turnover each year. And we've been able to take care of most all of that through attrition this year. We will have a few support staff positions where we have employees that just will not have jobs next year. But it is minimal and we're very fortunate to be able to do that. Moving forward, we'll look at the operating revenues first. We're projecting operating revenues of $212 million, $212.6 million. Of that, 92.1% of that comes from local sources, 5.4% from the state revenues, and 2.5% from revenue sources. The schedule allows us to look at the current projected revenues, compare it with next year's budgeted revenues, and then we can also look out for the, over the next five years. And looking at this year's revenues, a couple items I'd like to note is that our delinquent taxes, we're still showing $1.1 million there. Delinquent taxes are generally monies that we received this year that were levied in a prior year. And whenever we have property tax appeal settlements from the State Tax Commission, if someone wins their appeal, we actually return those funds and it reduces that amount. This year, we've had a large number of appeals that have been successful. I'm not confident we're going to get to that $1.1 million that's included in our current projections. We're currently negative in that category. So and another issue related to that is I may be talking to you about potentially recouping some of those lost revenues later on in the year, but I'll have to do a little more research on that. But we do have some good news. We did receive, if you look down at the other local sources, we did receive an unexpected significant increase in our financial institution tax revenues this year. And after a little research, it was determined that that increase was due to the opening of the Scott Trade Headquarters at the corner of Manchester and 270. It happened, it opened several years ago, but we actually got back payments this year. So we had a large influx this year, which I'll just go ahead and move on to the next, to fiscal year '13 on that same category. You can see that it actually, we're projecting a decrease in that revenue source. That's because we received a large back payment this year that won't continue on for, into next year. I'd also like to point out that the total revenues for next year are projected to increase just under 2%, or 1.97%. And if you would look at the current local taxes section, if you all recall, we, for the past five years, the school district has been levying a tax rate that was, from a residential perspective, 51 cents below the ceiling that was allowed, you could have levied. These projections, I'm assuming that we will utilize a portion of that voluntary rollback. You're not being asked to approve that tonight, but I wanted to make it clear that that was included in these projections. As you know, the tax rate isn't actually set until next September. But I am expecting a 4%, or projecting a 4% increase in that piece. A couple other noteworthy pieces, the VST revenues are showing a 9% decline. That is entirely attributable to a decline in enrollment. And we may see a slight increase, positive adjustment to that as well because we, since we have decided to start accepting a few siblings of our current students, we potentially could have 50 or so additional kids from what we have in these current projections. So that could be a positive move there. If you look out into the outer years, you can see that we're not projecting any major growth moving forward. The annual increases are between 1.23% all the way up to 2.07%. So small growth, but nothing major. Moving on to the operating expenditure budget, it's projected at $214.1 million, of which 85.5% of that is salaries and benefits. 28.1% are in what we consider the programs, and that is the non-salary and benefit piece of all the support programs in the district, the technology department, the utilities we pay, the food service, all of the things we buy are categorized in that section. And then we also have a 1.4% of our budget is what we consider our school operating budgets. Those are per pupil allocations that are provided to the schools that they use to fund copies and, you know, miscellaneous supplies, postage. It's not their salaries, benefits, or even the building operating costs. So this schedule then allows us to look at a little closer detail to the expenditure budget this year, next year, and moving forward. And as you can see, we are projecting an overall decrease of 3.5%. And that is completely attributable to the cost containment or budget cutting actions that you approved earlier in the year. So if you also then look as we move forward, basically, we're projecting expense growth ranging anywhere from 1.5% to 2.5% over the next five years. And again, I'd like to point out that in those fourth and fifth years out, you know, there are basically educated guesses based on what we know right now because a lot of things can change over the next five years. So think back to the first chart I showed. You saw that that fund balance line went negative by June 30th, 2014. With the adjustments that you've made so far that take effect July 1, we've altered that line. But if you look at it, you can see that we still haven't balanced our budget over the long term moving forward. We will be balanced next year, but we do have additional work to do to ensure that we can maintain our balanced budget moving forward after next year. And this chart allows you to see that a little closer. If you look at the net gain-loss row, you can see that we're projecting an operating deficit this year of about $11.3 million. Next year, the budget we're presenting tonight shows that we would have an operating surplus of about $458,000. But then over the next four years, we'll have to make some adjustments or we will see operating deficits ranging anywhere from 2 to 3.8 million. So work's not done yet. So understanding that, we've also identified areas that we believe warrant further research. We believe we need to take a very hard look at our employee salary and benefit programs moving forward. All of our staffing models that would include support and instructional staff. We believe we should strive for improved efficiencies in transportation, community education, other programs. We should look for every opportunity for increased revenues, which would include the reduction of the voluntary tax rate rollback, partnerships, self-supporting programs, fees, grants, and other opportunities. And then also, we need to take a look at our instructional programs, outdoor education, our middle school and high school structures, summer school, and I'm sure there are other things that we would probably need to take a look at as well. So in summary, our expenditures have exceeded revenues for the past three years, drawn down reserves. We've taken actions to reduce the operating budget by approximately $8 million annually moving forward. The reductions include the elimination of 136 full-time positions, 36 part-time positions, and numerous efficiency and operating adjustments. Revenues are expected to increase 1.97% next year. The budget will be balanced for 2012, '13, but additional future adjustments may be required due to continued economic concerns. And our fund balances have been drawn down to our policy minimums. Therefore, appropriate actions will need to be taken to avoid use of future reserves. So moving forward, you know, again, you approved the budget reductions in February. We've had all the conversations with the impacted employees over the past couple of months. Tonight, I'm presenting the preliminary budget presentation. We'll ask for you to approve the formal budget on June 13. And then our new budget and the reductions will actually take effect July 1. Again, I'm not asking for a recommendation tonight, just asking for your input or feedback. And at this point, I'm ready for any questions you may have. Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
Could I just, going back to your projected sources of revenue of that screen there, you're showing that in the outline years, '14, '15, '16, '17, an increase in tax revenues of about 2 to 3 million a year. How do we accomplish that without increasing taxes?
We're expecting that, and these projections, again, are guesstimates in the outer years. We would, prior to the current recession or the past recent recession, we would have normally grown naturally 2 to 4% annually in assessed valuation. And that, our revenue growth from those, from that growth would have been limited to the inflation rates. But we are assuming that there will be some property value growth in those outer years and that there will be some level in inflation. So, you know, a 1% increase is, you know, $1.5 million.
I just wanted to know what your assumption was there.
Yeah, I'm not projecting any additional tax increases in those outer years.
Kind of hope you're right.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
Anybody?
Well, the delinquent taxes, it just seems so unfair to me that, and I know it does to you, too, we have to set our tax rate, make these assumptions, and we have no control over that portion of it. And we have no recourse, right?
Well, the only recourse, I mean, as you just mentioned, we set our rates based on the values that are in place at the time of our property tax hearing in September. The only recourse we have is the following year, we can go back and adjust our rates based on the adjusted values. And that's what I was talking about, the recoupment that is possible. And again, we'll need to look and see if it's worth the effort. But I may be recommending some form of recoupment, probably of our commercial rate in September. But again, it's too early to know that.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Mark, what do you think is the worst-case scenario about the changes to the foundation formula? What's the worst thing that could happen to us?
Well, the worst case, which I don't think will happen, is if there's lawsuits filed based on what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education decides to do, given, if there's no legislation approved this year. DESI will be required to make a decision on how they reduce the allocations to schools moving forward. If they do it by reducing the state adequacy target, one group of schools, you know, win big and another one loses big. If they do it by just doing a straight proration, it's just the opposite.
Right.
They've recently come out and suggested that they may be considering some level of a compromise, a small adjustment in the state adequacy target and a small adjustment in a proration-type action. Worst-case scenario is they pick whatever they pick, whoever loses more on that than they would have under one of the other scenarios would sue. And technically, they could escrow all of the revenues in dispute, meaning the state revenues wouldn't be distributed until a lawsuit was resolved. I doubt that's going to happen.
That's a really bad-case scenario.
That would be a bad-case scenario and much worse for a lot of other school districts than us. But I don't think that'll happen. I just can't imagine that the state would throw every school district into turmoil. Realistically speaking, I would expect our worst-case scenario would be the straight proration, which would cause us to potentially lose 700 or 800,000 dollars. It's not a good thing, but it doesn't bankrupt us.
It could be a heck of a lot worse.
Oh, when you just look at the scenarios in Rockwood, I mean, between those two alternatives, there's like a 12 or 14 million dollar swing on theirs. I just can't imagine how you're trying to build a budget not knowing.
Right. All right. And the projections that you have in here, as you said, have a rollback of...
Again, we've been levying a rate 51 cents below the ceiling. The projections here are assuming that we're going to adjust it by 12 to 20 cents. And again, it's not, I'm not sure exactly where it will fall by the time we get to September, but that's essentially what I'm expecting.
And the goal would be to be balanced?
Yes.
No excesses?
Exactly.
Just balanced?
With the impact of the budget reductions and the rate adjustment, we should be balanced.
Go ahead.
And if we don't, if we don't... Take the tax rate, well, what, how much do we have to cut?
We'd need to cut, we would need to probably look at another $6 million or so, which would potentially be another 100 to 120 jobs.
At this time, I guess that would mean teachers.
Well, you couldn't adjust that amount again without impacting probably a lot of programs in the district.
So that's something we don't want to do?
Wouldn't be very good, no, I don't think so.
They could cut our pay again.
Okay. I'll take a pay decrease.
If we can, if we balance in '12, '13, and if you saw the chart, then going forth, we're not out of the woods, but we can manage, I believe, Mark believes, 2 to 3 million dollar deficits a year. That's goal six. And it's doing it with a process and we have to work through that. And Mark talked about some of the areas that we have to look at, but it's manageable versus where we were a couple of months ago.
Right. Two is a lot different than eight.
Yes, it is.
So we're just counting on you to, you know, keep us moving in the right direction.
You know, I've been extremely impressed with the manner in which we were able to actually sit down and review our operations very quickly and make pretty significant adjustments in a very short period of time that kept us from really moving into a devastating situation moving forward. So I feel comfortable that we'll be able to adjust what we need to adjust to remain solvent moving forward.
And do you see any way between now and when we set the tax rate? And do you see any way between now and when we set the tax rate, any changes that could happen that would not necessitate us taking back some of the voluntary rollback?
I can't foresee that. I mean, I was, I was extremely surprised by the increase in financial institution tax this year.
Right.
I mean, nothing suggested that that was going to happen.
Right.
But I would be very surprised if we have dramatic changes in our revenues or expenses between now and September.
So just to recap, your projections have a 10 to
12 to 20.
12 to 20 cents tax rate hike based on our voluntary rollback within our .51 cents. Some of that is commercial, and some of it is residential, and we can be balanced for 12-13 with this. Without this, we're going to be required to cut programs and positions in order not to fall below our required fund balance.
Correct.
And could you give me, give us a, an idea what that would cost the average homeowner?
Yes, a 12-cent increase on a $200,000 home would be about $46.
A year?
A year. 20-cent increase would be about $76.
On a $200,000 home?
On a $200,000 home.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Been a long day, huh?
Yeah. Thanks.
Cards won.
They did. Did they?
Yeah.
That's good news.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. All right, 14.0, policy review. Call in Jessica Chucker.
Any questions?
No.
I will just recap. Some changes to the class size and the two policies that are in front of you really are in efforts to put parameters to protect our class sizes and to protect kind of our financial status, so we wouldn't have to absorb additional costs if students were added, non-resident students. So it's a pretty simple, straightforward change, and, you know, with the legislation or the court decision just recently, may not be a major concern, but we want to make sure we're protecting our current academic situation with our class sizes, and also that it wouldn't impact us financially, especially given the report you were just giving, so.
Doesn't affect us yet. About a year from now, we may be
Right, so kind of putting it forward to protect us for the future.
And I would just add that legal counsel, you know, in light of what happened yesterday with the decision, would be that we still follow through and adopt the policy, because obviously, there's going to probably be an appeal, and there's going to be further discussion, so putting this in place is something that will protect our interests as we think about future months or years relative to any turn or
Right.
fix or finalization of the issue at hand, but right now, there's no urgency like we thought, perhaps, but, so we're not sure what's going to happen in the legislature, but again, our legal counsel, Mr. Tua, said, please, in his recommendation, follow through with what work you've done.
So you're comfortable with us not voting on this tonight, but leaving it till next board meeting?
Well, we're fine, I think, yes, as planned, yeah.
You're optimistic.
Anybody have any questions for DESI about the policies?
He gets off easy tonight, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. 15.0, call for special meeting, none. 16.0, call for executive session, June 2nd and 13th, 2012, and June 5th at 5:30 at the Administration Building. Okay, so June 2nd and June 13th. Carol, do I need to read all this?
Yes. Just to read the statutes.
Okay. The Board of Education called for an executive session on Saturday, June 2nd, 2012, at the Administration Building for the purpose of considering, one, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Two, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13. And on Tuesday, June 5th, 2012, at 5:30 PM at the Administration Building for the purpose of considering, one, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable persons, including record of individual tests or examination scores, 610.021.6. And on Wednesday, June 13th, 2012, at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communications between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved. Is that it?
All in favor? Or we'll call, or all in favor?
We'll call.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yep.
Mr. Major?
I
Mrs. Mulgrew?
Yes.
Dr. Sirtino?
Yes.
Mrs. Falcone? Yes. 17.0, recess. 18.0, closed meeting, none. 19.0, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion care, any opposed? No dudleys. 6.60. At this time, we will adjourn. Thank you very much for your attendance.